Chris. Good evening. A San Dimas City Council meeting and Housing Authority meeting will come to order. Please rise and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. If things look a little bit different tonight, we would like to welcome back Councilman Vienna back from his training and it's a little different from the last eight weeks. Welcome back. Thank you. Report on the closed session, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council had five items on its closed session agenda tonight. The City Council met in closed session prior to this meeting on numbers three, four, and five. Council discussed those items and gave direction to staff, but there was no reportable action taken. Closed session items number one and two, the council will consider those items after the open session tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, could I take a moment of personal privilege related to your comment?
Please.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank the community and the City Council for the opportunity and the staff to attend the training that I went to. For those in the community who are in attendance tonight that may not know, or those that may know, my profession, I work in a career in law enforcement, and I work for Sheriff's Department here in the county. And I was nominated and selected to attend the Federal Bureau of Investigation National Academy. And so it's a very big honor. I was very fortunate to have that opportunity. And that looked like a live-in academy for 10 weeks in Quantico, Virginia, on Marine Corps Base Quantico at the FBI National Academy where they train their special agents. And so the training there was incredible. It's intensive, physical as well as academic training. Also had the opportunity to take, chose to took a graduate caseload and picked up a graduate certificate from the University of Virginia while I was there. And a lot of the training and the experience and the education and the relationships, the class itself is representative of law enforcement leaders from across the world, a total of 257 candidates attended the 291st session of the National Academy, and of that, 26 countries were represented. And so I had the opportunity to get to know very well representatives and leaders in law enforcement, executives of similar rank or higher than I, from all over the world, from Africa. Every continent was represented with the exception of Antarctica and the Arctic. So it was an amazing opportunity. I'm very grateful for the councils affording me the opportunity to prove my absences to attend that. And I also want to thank the staff and the community for working together on a number of things. The education and the experience is definitely going to benefit the community here, as well as the work I do outside of here. And I look forward to working with our sheriff station, our captain here, and some other segments of the community on some things that I look forward to bringing back and implementing. So I just wanted to sincerely thank you all for that opportunity. And I know we were busy. We've had a lot of big things happening while I was away, and I look forward to getting back to it. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Before we get started, given the significant number of public hearing items, as well as the long close, a very long closed session and more to come, I am going to ask my fellow council members to agree to move the study session discussion on the citywide special events to the meeting in October. I do not believe we have timing issues that are necessary having to hear this item tonight. If there's any opposition, I'd hear it now.
I'm supportive of that, Mayor. I also, just for the purposes of placement on the agenda, just for staff, I think it's important, that particular topic, as I understand it, may be better before a council meeting, not after, given some of the community stakeholders who may wish to attend and participate.
If I may, we'll look at the timing of both October meetings, given some closed session, other items that we have that are pressing, and we'll schedule it early in one of those meetings.
Thank you. No objection? Okay. Okay, we have a presentation tonight from the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, an update. Aurelio Marquez.
Good evening, City Council. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the council for letting us join you this evening. My name is Aurelio.
Microphone.
It is? Okay. Good evening, City Council. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you, I'd like to thank the council for letting us join you this evening. My name is Aurelio Marquez, and this is my colleague Katie Ward. We're both employees of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government. We're here today to give you kind of a brief description of some of the COG programs and projects we have, and also give you some updates on upcoming work we have for the next fiscal year. The San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, or the COG as we call it, is a regional planning agency that aims to improve the quality of life for the San Gabriel Valley residents. The COG is the largest, most diverse subregional council of governments in Los Angeles County with over, with more than 2 million residents. I'd like to acknowledge our leadership. This is our governing board, and it consists of Mayor of Laverne, Tim Hepburn, Councilmember Ed Reese from the city of Claremont, Mayor April Verlato from the city of Arcadia, and Mayor Corey Moss from the city of Industry.
I'm sorry, could you just point out who Mayor Hepburn is really fast in that in the photo? Could you describe him?
Let's see. Is this the...
Could you describe him? I just wanted to see. What is he wearing?
Oh, he's wearing gray.
Perfect. Thank you. I just want to make sure to point out to him. I pointed him out. Thank you.
Okay, so, okay. So I'll start now by walking you through some of the programs and initiatives that we have at the COG. I'll start with some of our sustainability and environmental programs that aim to ensure that residents have safe and clean environments. You can see some of the programs and projects we offer there on the slide, and I'll just talk about a couple of them. One of the programs we have is the Fire Prep SGV, which is designed to educate and help our residents understand wildfire preparedness in an effort to help keep their families and homes safe. We have also partnered with the Southern California Regional Energy Network, which offers customized support and resources to help public agencies save energy and money. Next, I want to talk a bit about mobility. Here is a list of some of our transportation projects right there on the left. Our Measure M Subregional Program, as you all are aware, is a sales tax measure that funds transportation projects in Allee County and also in our region. One of those projects is the 5760 Confluence Project. The 5760 Confluence is one of the worst segments on a freeway in terms of congestion and accidents in the nation. The project aims to reduce lane weaving by reconfiguring ramps and interchanges and adding mainline and bypass lanes, thus making it safer for vehicles. Another set of programs we have at the COG work to address homelessness and housing. These programs really focus on helping our most vulnerable residents. One program in particular I'd like to highlight is our tiny home interim shelters. These interim shelters are coordinated and helped run by the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust. These shelters are a place for unhoused people to receive support, services, but most importantly, a roof over their head. And that's one of the events we had, one of our interim tiny homes. And our last category really focuses on people who may have a mental crisis or in need of basic supplies. One program I'd like to discuss is SGV Care, which is designed to expand the capacity of 9/11 operations. It offers an alternative response to behavioral health-driven calls, thus alleviating the workload of law enforcement by providing a mental health crisis response. And now I'll pass it on to Katie.
Thank you, Aurelio. Not as tall, so here we go. All right, and just to kick us off, I want to shift gears a little bit, talk about our recent accomplishments that we've had over this past fiscal year. We broke ground on two of our grade separation projects, one in the city of Monobello, the Monobello Corridor Grade Separation Project, and then one in the city of Industry, the Turnbull Canyon Road Grade Separation Project. And we kicked off construction on these projects, and we're really excited to complete them in the coming years. Next, we opened three food recovery hubs throughout the region, and this is part of our SGV Fresh program that aims to get recovered through nonprofit organizations that would otherwise be thrown away. And then next, we served 1,900, over 1,900 vulnerable residents through our partnership with the Los Angeles Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, or LAQADA for short. And through these programs, we were able to house 88 clients. And last, through our Regional Housing Trust, we supported the revolving loan fund program that supported 242 units in the region, as well as initiated 16 affordable homeownership opportunities. And next, I want to have some highlights on the city-specific programs that the city of San Dimas is involved with, again, part of many of our programs, which just wanted to highlight a few. The first is the East San Gabriel Valley Sustainable Multimodal Improvement Project, quite a mouthful, so we call it SMIP for short. But this is a great regional project with seven other cities in the eastern San Gabriel Valley that aim to implement projects for active transportation and first-last-mile improvements throughout the region. And again, we really appreciate the city being a part of this bigger regional project because we've heard from our state and federal funding agencies that these regional projects are really a priority. So, thank you. And then next, for the homelessness programs that we support, the city's existing efforts with LAQADA to provide street outreach two days per week with the homelessness outreach team. And then last, as Aurelio mentioned, we have our Measure M Subregional Program. This is a program that we administer as a COG to award funds to cities individually and on different regional projects, and happy to report that the city has over $800,000 to one of these projects for a future gold line improvement project. And then next, we have Looking Ahead. So we have a lot of things planned for the coming year, and just to highlight a few, we hope to complete the San Gabriel Valley Broadband Strategic Plan, as well as a community wildfire protection plan for the whole region. Next, we will begin implementation of our Jump Start Bus Corridor Improvements, which was the result of a comprehensive San Gabriel Valley Transit Feasibility Study that we did, and those projects are aimed to be completed ahead of the 2028 Olympics that we have planned in LA. Next, we will award over $6 million in loan funds to support construction of 120 affordable units in the region through our San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust. And then last, we'll use rapid rehousing development funds to permanently house 76 individuals and support 67 interim housing sites in three of our cities. And this is our policy committee wall of fame, and it lists all of our different policy committees, but I did want to acknowledge and highlight city San Dimas specific. So we have City Manager Steering Committee. Chris Constantine serves as our vice chair, and he's been instrumental in helping us push forward our projects by reviewing different projects that we have as a part of that committee. We're very sad to see him go, but we really do wish him well in his future endeavors in Northern California. And then John Ebner, who served earlier this year on the council, was a part of our E and R Water Committee, as well as our Homelessness Committee. And although not listed here, we also have our governing board, which is our big, big board. We have Eric Nacano, Mayor Protem, who will be our delegate, and Councilmember Eric Barber, who's our alternate. So we really look forward to your participation at our monthly meetings. And that is all we have for you. There's a lot of stuff that we do, and we didn't want to take too much of your time. So if you have any questions on any of the specific programs or updates that we talked about, you're free to ask us any questions or contact us at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Housing staff?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, staff, and members of the public. My name is Lily Flores, the housing manager. Tonight, I'd like to make a quick introduction of our new ALACADA Street Outreach staff. In August, we were informed of staff changes at ALACADA. Juan received a promotion and is now working in the corporate office, and Selena took a position at a different agency. So at present, working on our contract, which provides outreach services Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, we have David and Erin. David is the outreach coordinator, and he has been with ALACADA for over one year. He has been doing street outreach for a little over seven months, and he's been in our city for about two months. Erin is the outreach navigator. He has been with ALACADA for about seven months and working for our city for almost two months. Together, David and Erin are doing an exceptional job. They work throughout the day with our homeless services coordinator, who coordinates the efforts with the CAT team, code compliance, and the respective agencies throughout the county. In their short time here, they have already had over 100 connections and have provided some type of service to over 30 individuals, including placing an individual in a treatment facility, linking an individual to the tiny homes waitlist in Azusa, and reinstating an individual's Section 8 voucher whom they are currently helping look for a unit. Staff is very pleased with the work they have both done thus far, and we just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce them to the council and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Oral Communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any items on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comments will not be taken during each individual agenda item except for public hearing items. Comments on the public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussions on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to a staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking for once during three minutes, for three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
The first speaker will be Gary Chow from Mount SAC.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, and it's good to see you. My name is Gary Chow. I am a Mount SAC trustee, and tonight I'm here to talk about Measure V, which is $750 million bond measure on the November ballot. I only have time tonight to address two items, which I believe are some of the more common questions asked by those voters who are inclined to vote no. The first question is the amount of the bond, $750 million. The initial reaction is, wow, this is a lot of money. And we had a Measure G O in 2018 for the same amount. Well, let me explain a little bit about the cost of the bond. The cost of the bond is about $15 per $100,000. So if you were to do the math, if you had a $500,000 assessed value of your home, the cost of the bond would be about $75 a year. It would be reflected in your property tax bill. How long are you going to be paying for this bond? 30 years. Okay, I need to tell you that also. The reason bonds are on the ballot is because of the nature of our educational funding system by the state of California. What happens is the state of California only funds salaries and basic costs of the schools. If you wish to have capital improvements, new structures and things like that, that is not provided by the state of California. So you must have a bond on the ballot in order to fund these particular projects. So this leads us to the second question is, what am I getting for the bond? And why should I vote for the bond if there's no direct benefit for me? Okay, so let me address this issue. I think most of us would agree that bonds are a good thing. As a trustee of the college, the most frequent comment I hear from a lot of students is, this is the first place I've come to where somebody believes in me. Now, believing in me is probably, we envision, as a face-to-face conversation, but it also includes providing a modern facility and a conducive learning environment. And this is what the bonds will provide. For many of our students, the college is a safe haven from the chaos at home. It is a safe place to, it's a safe place to feel safe, and it's a place where you can dream big. The demographics of the college, 70% of our students are on some type of financial aid. 65% are Hispanic, 20% are Asian, 10% white, 5% black. Our students do not come from the affluent areas of society. And education is the level of the playing field. For many, Mount SAC is not just a first choice, but it's their only choice. Does that beat me? My three minutes is up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very, thank you for your time, council members. Thank you, Mayor Baird, for being on our bond oversight committee. Thank you, Councilmember Nacano, for endorsing the bond. Thank you, and I hope everybody would vote yes for Measure V. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chow.
Josh Goldman, speaking on the Beer and Wine Walk.
Good evening, council, mayor, city staff. My name is Josh Goldman. I'm not here tonight in my capacity as your trash provider. I'm here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. My name is Josh. I'm a board member for the Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight to remind the city and the community about the upcoming Beer and Wine Walk on October 5th. It'll be right downtown in San Dimas on Bonita. If you haven't been there, it's a great event. It's a great opportunity to support small businesses, support the community, all the different vendors, businesses that come out to shop and support the local economy. This year, we're anticipating about 63 participating entities. This will be artisan, nonprofit booths, pouring stations, restaurants, wineries, breweries, all the above. It's also a great opportunity to help support the chamber. It is a fundraiser for us. This allows us to continue doing the great work that we do, supporting local businesses, helping them open and stay in business here in San Dimas. So just a reminder, Saturday, October 5th, downtown San Dimas. You can visit sandtimaschamber.org to purchase tickets or any other merchandise. It's $50 for a regular ticket, $35 if you're a designated driver. And thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Of course.
Next speaker is Lisa Carson, speaking on the Homecoming Parade.
Good evening, Mayor Bedar, City Council, City Manager, staff, and members of the audience. My name is Lisa Carson, and I'm a teacher and ASB director at San Dimas High School. The ASB class and I run the Homecoming Parade each year. It is something that has become a tradition and near and dear to our hearts. The parade is something that sets the city apart from any other cities in the state. Many students have core memories participating in the parade since they were in elementary school or even watching it as it goes by. My students and I wanted to come today to express a sincere thank you for reviewing the Homecoming Parade last meeting, and we want to let you know that we deeply appreciate how you have helped keep it, keep this going over the years and for your continued support this year. We have brought you a poster for your boardroom in hopes you would find a spot on the wall for it, and we look forward to seeing each of you out there at the parade. Please do not forget that we have a car for each of you as well, and thank you for what you do, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Riley Sonas, and I kind of just want to add on to that. I'll keep it short, but I'm Riley, and I'm the senior class president at San Dimas High School. And I also wanted to thank the board on our students' behalf for helping make this parade possible another year. I know we look forward to this every year, and as a senior, I'm so glad that I was able to celebrate it all four years of high school. And I know many of our students have been participating since elementary school. We students feel like this parade is what connects our school directly to our community, and we just wanted to extend our gratitude once again for allowing us to have it. Thank you and have a good evening.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to address the students that just spoke. I hope to one day see you on the dais, because you may not know this, but Councilwoman Burtakos was the class president at San Dimas High School. And you can see that she has gotten a promotion, so to speak, so.
Thank you very much. Next.
Mayor, those are all the speaker cards for public comment at this time.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak to the council, feel free to come up to the podium. Don't all rush at once. Don't all rush at once. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion unless a member of the City Council requests a separate discussion. At this, at this time, Public Works would like to remove item number four, award the annual striping maintenance contract to, and to return the amended item in the next meeting. Any objection? None.
No.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of the consent calendar.
I understand that.
Mr. Mayor, I don't need to pull the items. I just had questions on item number five and item number seven.
You're not pulling it, you just like to make a question?
That's correct. Yes, thank you.
Number five?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For item number five, I noticed that within the materials, it talked about there was a limit of, I think, $15,000 per lot. Do you have an estimated total of what the project would cost? I didn't see that in the memo, so I was just wondering if it was a ballpark estimate.
We don't have a complete project yet. We do have a $500,000 budget for that, but it's going to be per lot. Every lot requires a different amount, so we're just going to start at the back end where it's the furthest. I can't even think right now, but, you know, so we're going to start there and then work our way down.
There's just a lot of variability, so that's why there isn't really like an estimate.
Right, there's not an exact one. If you look at the picture, there's some units that need three bricks, three blocks of bricks, two blocks, one block, some just need the fence, so it's going to vary, and that's why it's up to 15,000. We did get an estimate for one, which is probably one of the deepest slopes, which came out to about 14,000.
And then in a case where there might be a lot that has so much stuff going on, it exceeds 15,000, what would happen in that case? Would you just work up to the 15,000 or try?
No, we'll work on it. We'll look at it case by case, and then, like I said, some of them might only need the fence, so we'll have the extra money for that one, because we've kind of allotted 15 per lot.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other question?
And then for item number seven, authorizing hot water holding tank. Mr. Parkinson Recs Director, I just had one question. I know that you identified, I don't know how many water tanks are back there. I thought there were multiple water tanks back there, maybe I'm mistaken, but if there were multiple pieces of equipment that looked like they needed replacement, would it make sense to try to do bids for it all at once to perhaps get a lower price, or does it make sense to just do a one-off? I would imagine what they wear and tear, a lot of things are probably close to end of life.
Thank you, Councilmember, Mayor Protem Nakano for the question. There is only one water tank in the filter room for the recreation center for the pool.
For both pools, one tank for both pools.
Actually, the tank is for, it's the hot water tank for the domestic showers. So it's for the showers and the sinks and things like that.
Okay. So no real need to replace other equipment or try to bundle a bid together, just do this one thing?
We will certainly check. Absolutely.
Councilmember Nakano, let me speak to that. This is an emergency purchase, meaning the condition of the tank is in such disarray that it needs to be immediately taken care of, and it needs those exemptions. In terms of any other project that would replace other pieces of equipment, we would have to go out to bid depending on the cost of those items.
Got it, so this is an exception because of the situation?
Correct. If you notice, there's not a vendor contractor name because we haven't received price quotes just yet, but we needed, we needed the authorization to proceed. We could have proceeded under my emergency authority without coming to council and then subsequently come to council with that item, but we thought since the council meeting was aligning well, we'd just take it to you now immediately with the information in hand.
For the purposes of the time being, though, people can take showers and such, so you haven't had to turn it off?
It is currently operative, but that tank exists in a room that combines both the pumps as well as the electrical equipment, and with the 360-plus gallons of water, the weak point is on the bottom, and so a catastrophic failure of that could take out other critical equipment in that room, which would render the pools then potentially not usable.
And there's no risk with keeping it on, given the state of it and putting the other equipment at risk?
Not from, we would determine from the technicians that have gone out there, but in the location it is with the amount of weight and the age of the equipment, it could imminently fail.
Great, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
I'll second Councilmember Rebe and his motion for approval.
There's been a first and second. Any additional questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 5-0. We're going to move on to public hearings. We're going, at this time, we're going to flip-flop public hearing number two to the space of public hearing number one. So, staff.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council and the public. My name's Louis Torrico, Director of Community Development. Anne Moore, Senior Planner, will be presenting the project. Before I turn it over to her, I just want to mention a few things. So before you this evening is a downtown specific plan. I'd like to mention that the document itself, it's a major milestone just getting here, and it's a major document for the city itself, more importantly, for the future development of the city, especially during times when the state is passing bills, laws that are taking away local control. These type of documents help the city maintain some of the control, specifically because the document also includes objective standards, design standards for those projects that, when they include affordability in our exempt on certain codes, they will have to comply with those standards that are in the document. So it's a major, it's a major document. It's a very important document for the city. During the course of the past three years, city staff has done extensive public outreach. The document before you tonight is a product of the community's input, residents' input, stakeholders, business owners, the planning commission's input, and the city council's input. So we feel that we have a really good document before you tonight, and again, just want to mention that it is a major milestone just getting here, because this is the third attempt for the city to adopt such a document. So the fact that we're here this evening before you is a major milestone. So just wanted to turn it over to Anne, and she can give you some more information on the project.
Welcome, Anne.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. It's good to see each of you. I'm sure you guys know that I've been on hiatus for the past five months, so I have a baby now, so I just want to, you know, so hopefully we can wrap things up so I can go home to my baby. But first and foremost, I would like to extend my sincere appreciation for the members, the public at large, just for being able to embark on this journey with city staff for the past three and plus years, to develop a planning document that will guide the city's growth, specifically the downtown area, over the next 20 years. Since the release of the Request for Proposals back in April 2021, city staff has worked alongside Inner West Consulting Group and their respective subconsultants to develop the downtown specific plan that will help preserve the existing downtown and allow for development of new businesses and residential uses along the Bonita Corridor and other major streets within the plan. This entire process, as Louis had mentioned, has involved extensive community outreach, with five community workshop meetings held over the course of several, couple of years, online public outreach, the establishment of a community advisory committee, a technical advisory committee, environmental scoping meeting, and input from the planning commission and city council at various study sessions. With that, staff is here today to present to you the final draft downtown specific plan document for adoption, third time's a charm. And with that said, I would like to welcome Nick Pragakis from Inner West to give a brief overview of the process that has gotten us here tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, city staff and residents of San Dimas. So yes, I will give a brief presentation, an overview of the downtown specific plan, the final draft, and I'd like to also introduce the consultants on our team. We have Meridian Consulting, the Sequo consultant, with Tony Caciato and Michael Levi, as well as Christina Martinez from Arcadis. Let's see. So in terms of the agenda for this presentation, give a little bit of an overview of the specific plan and the goals and objectives of the project, the timeline for the last three years of working on the project, provide an overview of the downtown specific plan document. We'll have a brief discussion on the environmental review portion of the plan and the EIR, and then discuss the planning commission and staff recommendations. So the vision for the downtown San Dimas specific plan is over the next 20 years, and we're looking to create a lively destination along the Bonita Corridor and the downtown area to support new uses and activities that would increase and further the current and future economic base. It also will capitalize on the new transit station opening in 2025 and the new A-line that's going to be coming through San Dimas. It'll also create opportunities for new development activities for people that live in the city, as well as regionally. People coming out to community workshops wanted to see a more vital downtown, more activity, such as restaurants, you know, entertainment, housing, and other things. So the plan reflects a lot of those ideas and input we received over those five workshops. It also establishes new zoning regulations for the downtown, including outlining permitted uses in the specific plan area. It gives development standards for building form, heights, setbacks, and site design, which are not as detailed as they are today in your current zoning code. So it also enacts design standards to ensure quality design, whether it's architecture, landscape design, and site and building design, and it also helps ensure that streets are safe and user-friendly for all modes of travel and people of all ages. This shows a timeline from the beginning, that first box all the way at the left, the background analysis, kind of beginning of the plan back in fall of 2021, and heading through, you know, listening, envisioning sessions, community outreach, developing plan alternatives for the downtown area, working with city staff and residents and a consultant team to help prepare the plan, and then turning into a policy and plan document the last year or so, with developing plan policies, development and design standards. And then since late fall of last year and to, you know, basically now, we've been going through review of the specific plan with study sessions at the planning commission and city council, as well as holding a fifth community workshop back in June to get to this point for the downtown plan. So here's a overview of the document. It's 10 chapters. First chapter is on the introduction of the plan. It gives a little bit about the history of downtown and information about the specific plan area. Chapter two is the vision, downtown framework, and strategies, and gets into zoning and land use as well as other aspects of the plan, and I'll go into each of these in more detail in a moment. Chapter one outlines the public participation held to date. So again, as Anne mentioned, we've had a project website on the city page. We had a special MindMixer website to get public input and get people to provide feedback online at their convenience, so we got a lot of great feedback, you know, during the whole three years on the project and the specific plan area, and that helped inform a lot of the decisions and information that went into creating the plan. Again, we had five community workshops held throughout the specific plan process. We met with planning commission in a study session last November. We also had three study sessions with city council from December to February of this year, as well as bringing it to city council in May for an update. Chapter two outlines the vision, downtown framework, and strategies for the plan, includes the guiding vision statement for the future of downtown, goals and policies to help guide future development improvements. It has a land use plan framework and strategies for each of the six areas, and an illustrative concept plan for the Gateway Village West area, showing what kind of the new development standards and information in the plan would look like in the, in the western part of the specific plan area. This graphic shows the 200, approximately 200-acre specific plan area with the six zones that have been created. Working from the west to the east, we have the Gateway Village West Zone, and that includes specific standards and a vision for allowing a mix of uses such as commercial, office, and entertainment uses and housing, to help kind of increase the development as well as bring that character of the downtown from the, from the east, heading over to the west to the 57 freeway. We also have the Gateway Village East District, which is on the other end of the specific plan area that allows for also housing, but at a lower kind of level of height and density. We also have the existing town core zone, that's the existing downtown with the historic structures and what you see today along Bonita mostly, and that would just basically retain the character that's there today and the allowable uses that we kind of see in place there. We also have the Transit Village Zone, which is the purple area surrounding the new transit station, and that would allow for a mix of housing, retail, and other uses. And then we have the public semi-public zone, which is basically the uses that are here today, such as city hall, the fire station, the library, and so on. And then the open space, which we have a few designated parcels that are existing park space in the downtown area. The plan also highlights or shows the housing element sites overlays, so that is also included from the housing element and shown on this plan in the diagonal crosshatching along the plan area. Chapter three includes, again, this land use table, which shows the allowed land uses, whether it's residential, commercial, office, and other uses, where they're located, where these things could be located, whether either permitted or conditionally permitted or not allowed in the specific plan area. So we took quite a bit of time to refine this table through staff and consultant, you know, coordination, as well as talking with the planning commission and city council, and, you know, through our meetings, we also, with the public, kind of vetted these uses and have those in the plan. So it's very helpful for the city staff to look at these uses as they come online in the future and want to come into the specific plan area. Chapter four is the development standards, so that'll help regulate residential densities in the downtown, building massing and floor area ratios, has minimum lot size requirement for multifamily and mixed-use projects. It also has the number of stories and building heights prescribed, also details building setbacks from streets and surrounding lots, and includes upper floor building setbacks to help with the massing of new buildings coming in the downtown area, as well as open space and landscaping requirements. Chapter four also has some step-back examples and it details on how buildings can be stepped back from the streets. So you can see here is an example, this building in South Pasadena shows how a third story can be brought back from the main part of the facade, kind of stepped back 12 feet, and we have some provisions in the specific plan dictating how that would happen along public streets and other, and adjacent to other uses such as residential. Chapter five dictates the design standards and guidelines, which Louis had mentioned in terms of, you know, having design standards for new buildings or adaptive use of existing buildings. We have some design guidelines that are things that, you know, should be observed and wants to see, the city wants to see. They're not mandatory, however, we do have objective design standards for things that would have to be satisfied in the project design of new developments and objective design standards, particularly for housing and mixed-use to meet recent state laws for eligible housing projects. Chapter six details mobility strategies and the mobility and transportation aspects of the plan. The inner community meetings, we heard from residents, there is an interest in making the downtown more pedestrian friendly, a desire to encourage more activity such as outdoor dining, but also need to address and anticipate increased automobile traffic with new development, foot traffic to the station. So we want to make it easier for people to access transit and provide better connectivity in the downtown area. The five strategies we have in the plan include designing a network of complete streets that facilitate safe, comfortable, and accessible connections between different activities and destinations in the specific plan area, while retaining the small-town character of downtown, improving connectivity to transit through high-quality bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and streetscape improvements. Strategy three is to design bicycle and pedestrian networks that are connected, and they prioritize the safety of all users. Strategy four is to develop and incorporate parking management strategies to help encourage efficient use of parking resources in the downtown area, and make sure that enough parking is met with the plan and the vision as it develops over time, and then also to support transit-oriented land use activity and development around the new station. the new station. The plan, specific plans also are required by state law to show the infrastructure that would be needed for a, in a specific plan area in terms of new development and new improvement. So, we also outlined and showed new improvements for sewer, water, storm drain systems, electrical services, natural gas, as well as telecommunications and cable. And then the plan also has an administration section on how the plan can be used to review new proposed land uses and development, how it helped to allow for efficient entitlement processing and streamlining of new development for the specific plan, and then streamline review of multi-unit mixed-use residential projects under a new state law. The last, or one of the last chapters is implementation, and that shows how the plan will be implemented over time. So, we have all these great ideas, the vision, the policies, and all the, you know, aspects of the plan, what are some of the economic and financial strategies that could be used? So, we do show area-specific fees, dedications, and exactions that could be used to help make some of these improvements a reality, some ideas for special districts that could be created, such as an enhanced infrastructure financing district, or a business improvement district to help see new streetscape improvements or public improvements along the major streets in the downtown area, and to kind of work with the private development to, to make a great place in the, in the downtown. We also have federal and state grant opportunities that the city can take advantage, as well as developers. So, we, we outlined some of those grant programs that are available at the state level and federal level to also help implement the plan. We do include implementation strategies as well and phasing. So, what are the things that should happen in the next five years to help move the plan along, as well as from years five through 15, specific ideas and recommendations for moving the plan forward? So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael to talk about the SEQA document and information regarding that.
I'm Michael Levi with Merding Consultants. Pleased to be here with the City Council this evening. So, the city completed the environmental review as required for the proposed downtown specific plan under the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. The objectives of the environmental review include informing the City Council and the public of potential effects on the environment of the proposed project, to identify ways to minimize or avoid any significant effects of the proposed project on the environment, to promote coordination between agencies, which includes the city communicating with local, regional, and state agencies, getting their input on the project. Other key objectives include increasing the, the public's understanding of the environmental review process, and to enhance public participation in that review process. The city's environmental review of the project occurred concurrently with the preparation of the downtown specific plan over the past 21 months. As shown on the table on the right side of the screen, the city completed preliminary review of the proposed downtown specific plan and determined the potential for significant effects on the environment, and preparation of an environmental impact report, or EIR, was determined to be required. The first step in the EIR process was release of the Notice of Preparation, or NOP, in November of 2022. This was for a 30-day public review. It was sent to public agencies and posted on the city's website. During that 30-day public review, a public scoping meeting was held on November 16th of 2022, to provide an opportunity for additional input on the topics that should be studied in the EIR. After the scoping meeting process was completed, the draft EIR was prepared and released in early June of this year, for a 45-day public review period, which ended in late July. Following the completion of the, of the review period, the final EIR was prepared. The final step in the EIR process is certification of the final EIR. The city would be certifying that the final EIR was prepared in compliance with SEQA and reflects the city's independent judgment and analysis, and was considered, before the city considered approval of the downtown specific plan itself. So, the final EIR before you this evening consists of the draft EIR and final EIR documents. The draft EIR includes a complete description of the proposed downtown specific plan, a description of existing environmental conditions, analysis of potential environmental effects, approving and implementing the specific plan, identification of mitigation measures to avoid or lessen significant impacts, and also the analysis of alternatives to the proposed downtown specific plan. The final EIR document is incorporated, incorporates, pardon me, the draft EIR by reference, along with written comments to, to the city received on the draft EIR and responses to those comments. The draft EIR was circulated to state, regional, and local agencies for review. As a result of this review, the city only received a single comment letter from Caltrans District 7. Caltrans supports the downtown specific plan as it'll improve walkability, reduce auto-dependence, and facilitate the development of more affordable housing. Caltrans had a few questions and some recommendations. Responses were provided to these comments, none of which affect the conclusions of the draft EIR. State law also requires consultation with Native American tribes. The city received a request to consult with the Gabi Lino Band of Mission Indians, Kis Nation. After, after information was provided on the proposed downtown specific plan, the Kis Nation provided a letter supporting the downtown specific plan and requesting to consult on future development projects enabled by the downtown specific plan. This is already required by state law through AB 52. So, lastly, I wanted to just give you a quick overview of the conclusions of the EIR. The EIR determined that the potential impacts would be less than significant for the topics on the left side of the screen, which include energy, greenhouse gas emissions, hazards and hazardous materials, land use and planning, population and housing, public services and recreation, transportation, tribal cultural resources, and utilities and service systems. The EIR also determined that potential significant impacts may occur if cultural or paleontological resources are present in the specific plan area that, on sites that may be developed or redeveloped in the future. Additionally, there is a potential for short-term noise impacts during construction. All of these can be reduced through the mitigation measures identified in the EIR, which are included in the mitigation and monitoring reporting program that would be adopted with approval of the downtown specific plan in compliance with SEQA. The EIR identifies that an increase in air emissions would be generated by the construction, occupancy, and use of future individual development projects that, within the specific plan area, that cannot be mitigated to less than significant. I would like to note for the City Council that this is because of the numerical significance thresholds developed by South Coast Air Quality Management District for air pollutant constituents, which are low. These are developed for individual development projects, so larger projects or plans such as the specific plan cannot be mitigated feasibly to less than significant, just based on, on where those thresholds lie and how they were developed. I would also like to note, though, that South Coast Air Quality Management District did not comment on the draft EIR or suggest any additional mitigation or changes that would reduce air quality impacts. Additionally, the growth associated with the downtown specific plan is consistent with the growth in South Coast Air Quality Management District's air quality management plan, and for this reason, adopting the downtown specific plan wouldn't, wouldn't prohibit or obstruct implementation of that air quality management plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. With that said, staff and the Planning Commission has some recommendations for City Council. That includes conducting a public hearing to receive public input, adopt Resolution 2024-68, certifying the final EIR, and adopting the SEQA findings of fact statement of overriding considerations, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, adopt Urgency Ordinance 1311, approving zone change 24-02, and Municipal Codex Amendment 24-07. Introduce Ordinance 1312, approving zone change 24-02, and Municipal Codex Amendment And adopt Resolution 2024-69, approving general plan amendment 24-02. If there are any questions, staff and the consultant team are available.
Before we kick it back to the council for questions, I do want to mention a few things. So, your actions tonight do include an urgency ordinance. Approval of the ordinance would make these changes go into effect immediately. There is also a regular ordinance that's included with the packet. They would all, if the document was to be approved, they would all be approved tonight. The reason for that secondary ordinance is in the event that the urgency ordinance is challenged and is determined not to be valid, then we still have the, the regular ordinance that would be introduced tonight, and then second reading in two weeks, and then going to effect 30 days from that date. So, we just wanted to have that as, as a backstop, to have that in the event that the urgency ordinance is challenged. And then secondly, so we also want to mention is that the document before you tonight, it did go through some changes. So, the EIR, it did analyze max build-out, and when, as the consultant mentioned, that the EIR was put together during the same time that the draft specific plan was being drafted. The EIR didn't analyze a full build-out capacity of residential units if all the sites were to be, be built at 100% capacity, and that number was 3,686 residential units. During the December and January study sessions with the City Council, there were some changes that the council directed of staff on the land use changes. So, during those changes, it changed the density output. So, the document that's before you tonight, if that was to be approved and all the sites in the housing, in the downtown specific plan were to be built out at full capacity at 100% residential, that full build-out number is now, had been reduced to 3,381 units. Again, the EAR does this as required by state law to look at worst-case scenario. I do remind you that the, the sites are not just zoned for residential, they're zoned for residential and other uses such as commercial, office, service uses. Our anticipation is that these sites be developed as mixed-use developments, so you would not see the level of capacity that the EAR analyzed. Lastly, the EAR did analyze an alternative to the downtown specific plan where it reduced density in one of the land use plans. That reduces the, the number of max build-out to 3,185 units, roughly 200 units less. So, that's what's in your packet right now, so staff is recommending approval of the document as presented. However, the council could decide to approve that alternative version that the EIR analyzed. In the event that the council has concerns with the max density and want to pursue a further reduced option that further reduces density, the item would have to be continued. We'd have to do additional analysis with the environmental consultant to make sure that the impacts don't change for the EAR. And more importantly, it'll put, put us past our housing element deadline, which would put the city out of compliance and then open up the door to developers submitting what's called builders remedies projects, where essentially they're able to build any residential that includes 20% affordable units in any zone, regardless if it's zoned for residential or not, at any density, any height, without any City Council or Planning Commission review or approval. That concludes staff's comments.
Any, any questions of?
I guess my question would be, sorry.
I thought it was on. I guess my question would be, is that what the urgency ordinance is about, is trying to get that before the deadline and before any potential developers could submit plans for basically unlimited development?
That is correct.
Any, any further questions? At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time, please come up to the podium. John Ebner's coming up to the podium. He never been in his hollow halls ever before.
Hey, everybody. Good evening. I'm John Ebner. Live at 509 North San Dimas Avenue, right in the heart of the city. Going to enjoy the downtown specific plan and what it's going to bring. And so, yeah, I, I just wanted to say, and I did send a little email, but I'll talk a little bit about that. I think this, oh, and I was on the City Council for a while, just to say. And I've been looking forward to revitalizing downtown for 30 years, and I think maybe the downtown specific plan we have today is going to be a blueprint for that, that kind of thing to happen, so I'm really glad about that. So, congratulations on it. I, I think it's got a lot of good stuff in it, almost 100%. I urge you to approve the downtown specific plan. I'd go with that lower number that Louis or Marco just talked about on the housing. And that was my first point, is that I guess we backed ourselves into a corner with the housing element by saying, here's how many units we're going to have on all these sites. And so, it, it's hard to go lower than a, you know, that 3,181 that we just talked about. But especially with the three other sites that are on the next item, when those are upzoned as well, we're, you know, required by RENA to do 1248. We've done a few already, so we're probably about 1,200 units we've got to do, 600 or so have to be affordable. And yet, here we are, planning for the 3,000 units. And I understand the argument that some of them won't be developed at that, but still the city should be in control of that and should say what we want to do, and I would say that should be a lower number. But as I say, I think the housing element, which was adopted and approved, we painted ourselves into a corner, and so we just can't go much lower. So, I'm, you know, okay with that. I think it's going to have a big effect on traffic and other things, and it should be a lower number. But all in all, I guess that's what it takes to help activate the downtown, which is what we want, want to have happen and expand the downtown. The second point is related to affordable units, and San Dimas can't build its way into affordability. I think everybody realizes now that San Dimas could add 5,000 units, 10,000 units, 20,000 units, and it's not going to be affordable. Do I have a time limit during a public hearing?
No.
Okay, thank you. And it's, I'm not going to be very long, actually. So, but as far as affordability goes, the way to ensure affordability is not to say we're going to do density at 30 units per acre, 60 units per acre, or anything like that. That's not going to ensure affordability. These will be market-rate housing unless the city does something about it. And as I've advocated in the past, we should require developments of a certain size to have a certain percentage of affordability of low and very low-income units. Remember, low is 80% of the, up to 80% of the median income, which is not really that low when you get right down to it. A lot of teachers, firefighters, everybody else does not have, their income is below that. So, my suggestion would be as a separate item, because I don't think we included it in this, and we can't at this late hour. My suggestion is that for any development that's over 40 units, we require 15% affordability. Now, there are other percentages out there, 20, 25% that many cities have adopted, but I think the 15% is reasonable, and I urge the City Council to ask staff to pursue that further. I know they've looked into it, but I think they should pursue it further and come up with that kind of requirement for things that are going to be happening, because we do need to have that affordability. And again, that would be on the developers, by the way, the city is not subsidizing that. The last point I wanted to make, and it relates to both of the, the points so far, is that I've heard anyway that there are proposals for some of the units, some of the parcels that are in the downtown specific plan, and that the proponents don't want to build at a very high density. They don't want to build smaller units that are more affordable. They want to build regular townhomes and that kind of thing. At least that's my, my, what the rumors are. I think it's a mistake to allow a significant, developers to significantly circumvent the standards in the specific plan, because all that does is squeeze what we need to do for those 1248 and affordability into a smaller and smaller area, a smaller number of parcels, which means those, two things happen, at least. One is that the, I, I believe those parcels are then harder to develop for people to come in and say, oh, you've, you know, you're going to have to do all this affordability here. And I think it's going to discourage development on the parcels. Secondly, if they are built, and they're built at that 60 units or whatever it would be, 40, 50, 60 units per acre, because we've squeezed it in, the effects are, the, the massiveness of those projects will have a greater effect on the surrounding neighborhoods and the existing neighborhoods. And so, that's, that's the thing I would caution the City Council about and have staff maybe make sure they take that into consideration when you consider these other proposals. But all in all, it's a great plan. Thanks to the consultant, thanks to our great staff, thanks to the, the City Council, of course, and thanks to the public who were interested and came forward and gave a lot of suggestions. So, with that, I yield back my time.
Thank you, John. Anyone else wishing to speak to this plan? You gotta be kidding me. Ma'am? You come, come up to the podium, ma'am, please.
Hi, my name's Josie Norman, and I'm from San Dimas, and I have the Railside Cafe. And this is, for me, I'm not an engineer, so I'm trying to understand all of this. And I see many more years where the downtown and the people living there will have disruption, you know? We've already had this for, I'm sure it's a great project, but it's not easy, you know, to live within a big project. So, I would like you to consider that before you go on into this huge project, you know? And I would like to be able to read all this where it's a little more explained and take it home and look at it. And my question is, is this only approved by the board? Or will the citizen, you know, of San Dimas have a say? An answer to this, or?
The answer is whether it's going to be approved by this board. But if you want a copy of it, we can get you like 1,600 pages and you can sleep every night.
Well, yeah, well, tonight was not 1,600 pages, so maybe it could become, you know? But...
Chris, you have something you want to add?
I would say let's get through the public hearing and close the hearing, and then any questions can be answered after.
Did you understand, ma'am?
I didn't hear him, so...
Okay. After any other questions come up, then we'll give some answers.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You know, I'll have a staff member talk to you.
Sorry?
I'll have a staff member talk to you.
Okay, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council.
Well, in true tradition of always trying to jump the gun here, I'm just going to jump the gun and I'm going to say, I agree with our former colleague here, John Ebner. I'm, I'm not a fan of the numbers. I think, I understand the premise, and I understand the urgency, but I do have concerns about the density. And, and I also think on, on, so on the, on the first point that, that John raised, I do agree that I'd like to see a lower number. And so, I am in favor of looking at the alternatives as it relates to that. On the second point of what some call inclusionary housing, zoning, so on and so forth, I'll say that the San Dimas Village Walk project where, where I resided for quite some time had a requirement for affordability. Out of the 67 units, I think five of them are in the, oh my God, I'm having a brain fart. Village Walk has eight and Grove Station, I think, has five. And I can tell you, at least from, from my personal experience, you know, none of those units had any of the doom and gloom issues that I think people thought would come with having an affordability piece. So, to that end, I am supportive of a requirement of affordability in projects of a specified number. I do think that there is some merit to dispersing those units as these projects come up of a certain density, to be able to address that. But, but those, other than that, I, I guess I would say that, I probably should have started with, thank you to the staff, the consultants and everybody for the work. It's been a long journey on this, and I, I do agree that there was a lot of time spent on this, from community members over the last several years to the council meetings and, and the changes on council as we've gone through all this, which I know for the consultant and staff is always fun, when there's a new voice up here or new ideas. And I know we've gone through some of that during this process. But, but I will say that, you know, overall, I think we're going in the right direction. I also would point out that in my review of, of just various comments from the community regarding this, I know there's a lot of concern from members of the community with regards to the, I think we're calling it the West Village or the area where Michelangelos and Applebee's and all that is. I know a lot of people saw some of the renderings of that and thought that it was just creating an urban jungle here and creating, taking our town into a different step. I guess what I would say to that is, is that, you know, everyone during, I can, and I could probably, everyone up here, I would guess, would, I would say would stipulate to this is, you know, when we go out and it's, it's time for, whether it's campaigning time or it's just regular time to hear from people that live here, everyone always says the same thing. They want more restaurants, but wouldn't you know, we actually have more restaurants than some of our neighboring towns if you actually look at the count and business licenses. And they want entertainment, and they want a lot of things. And to what our former, former colleague here said, one of the things that I've learned in my seven years on council now is that when you talk to any of the people that do these studies, is you need population density to provide synergy to be able to get you those tenants. And it takes some time to understand that, but, and accept it. And that's a tough thing to accept. So, I think that there's been a lot of thoughtful discussion behind all of this. But I also agree that, given our RENA numbers and then understanding, you know, especially related to some of the other projects where we need to put some density in, I understand. But I am 100% in favor of looking at a lower number than what's being proposed as an alternative. And I would also be interested in requiring some affordability with, with certain project sizes.
I was very, very fortunate to serve on the advisory committee for the downtown specific plan. Oh, I don't want to hear myself or see myself. All right. So, I served on the advisory committee. It is really, really wild to come full circle here. I had a question on the lower max buildout number of 3,185. Is that, is there any risk in approving that number tonight and going past our deadline?
There is none. So, that alternative has already been analyzed as part of the environmental analysis. So, that is one of the options on the table. So, we can, the council definitely move forward with that option, get it approved tonight, and we'll still be okay with our deadline.
The lowest, safest number tonight. Okay, thank you.
If I may, just to clarify that, it's my understanding that that, that the 3,000 number is the ceiling, and it was done to show what the environmental impact would be in the worst-case scenario. And therefore, if you do anything lower than that, then the assumption is the environmental impact is less than, so therefore, no study needs to be done. If you were to do it the other way around and you had a lower number and say you wanted to go above that housing number, then you would have to redo some sort of an assessment. Is that correct understanding?
When you're talking about the, the lower number, you talking about the 3,180 something?
That's how I...
Okay, versus the higher number of 3,600.
Yeah, so both those options, they've been analyzed as part of the environmental impact report. So, both those options, either those options can be moved forward today without any issues or concerns. To answer your question in regards to, it is a lower number, the impacts are the same. Technically, when you look at it in terms of environmental analysis, where if you're doing less density, you would think logic would tell you it's less of an impact and everything. But the reason that we'd look at those changes is because of the way that, the way that VMT transportation is looked at now. VMTs is, the way it's analyzed is vehicle miles traveled. So, the way that they, they look at that is the more residents you have, it can offset those vehicle miles traveled, because those same residents are in the, in the area are servicing those commercial uses and service uses. So, we do have to look at it when numbers are reduced. However, under this version, the alternative three, we already looked at that and would still be in compliance.
Okay, thank you for the clarifying. Eric?
I think that answered my one question, but I guess I would just say that I think the, the number as far as density goes is something that the, the community just doesn't look forward to as far as building out, the, the potential of building out. I realize when I look at this that the reality is that chances are probably not all of that is going to be built. And, and I can accept that, but if there's any chance, a lot of the, the things that were mandated to do, like RENA, we have looked at as a council and said that we want to do the, the minimum as far as what we need to do to be safe and to protect the city from, from, you know, the potential of having development cram down our throats while still protecting the character of the city. So, for that reason, I think I'm leaning towards that same opinion on the density numbers. The 3,300 seems like a lot, and even 3,100 doesn't seem all that much better to me when we were talking, you know, the, the scope of a project like this. So, I, I would be in favor of less. And, and the affordability piece, it doesn't scare me at all. I, I do realize that there, there is some, some thought that it may bring challenges to any particular development that may be required to implement affordability. In my day job in a city that is full of high-density housing development with a 20% affordability requirement, I don't know that I see and feel on the public safety side any particular impact from that. And I, I do agree that unless we plan for the affordability, it's probably not going to come naturally. So, as far as that goes, that'd be my preference, but that's where I'm at right now.
I, I think I just need some clarification. So, the 3,000 number is if we take all the plots and we do 100% residential and no commercial, which as I understand it, is a no-one's version of what we envisioned for the future. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, that's what I thought as well. So, I, I just feel okay with that number, because I know that there is no scenario, and I've never talked to a single person who said we should take all the land that we have set aside and only build residences with no commercial. Any commercial that we build, which we all agree is a priority for the city, would reduce the number of units down, and I'm guessing it would be more comfortable, closer to the number that we're all comfortable. So, if that is the assumption and what I'm hearing, then I'm okay with that number, knowing that that is a 0% chance of happening, so.
I'd also like to mention on top of that, so it, it's correct statement you mentioned in that, Councilman Rinconno. And also, you need to remember that the housing element, there's 14 housing element sites, 11 of which are within the downtown specific plan, and most of these have a requirement to do mixed use. So, on those housing element sites, you just, you, you wouldn't be able to do 100% affordable, because then you'd be out of compliance with the housing element. So, we did look at that briefly and looking at those sites that do require the mixed-use component, those, I mean, you're looking at about potentially 400 to 500 units less.
Got it. So, even if we wanted to build 3,000, we couldn't legally do it then?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. The only other comment I would make is I agree with Councilmember Vienna and our former colleague, Councilman Ebner, on some sort of requirement or strong recommendation for affordable housing. I think it's so important in our community that people who live here are people who don't have a high income, and those are people like teachers, nurses, firemen, others who may have chosen a life of service and whose contributions to the community and living in the community provides immeasurable benefit. So, because of that, I think it's really important that council consider that. I'd be supportive of that. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Thank you, John, for putting together this document. You're always good for putting together lots of words on a lot of papers. But, but thank you. We've talked about this many, many times. When I woke up this morning, I was thinking about 3,600 new homes in San Dimas. Three or four months ago, on the front page of any local newspaper around, there was this massive drawing that said, "San Dimas City Council Approves 3,600 New Homes," and the phone started ringing, and it rang continuously for the rest of the day. I, I had to see if I had to wake up from my nightmare and see if I, if I did something I didn't realize I did. But the reality was, we're here tonight to talk about this. From what I keep hearing from, you know, staff and people, that we approve a number and there's virtually no way in hell we're going to ever get to that number, because of the reasons with commercial and deals like that. So, we look at our RENA numbers, we've had RENA numbers of 1246, you know, this last cycle. Before that, we had RENA number of much less in the cycle before that. We had a number less, much less. And of all of that time, I personally can't remember a unit that we built. So, me thinking that we're ever going to get to 3,100, I just have a hard time digesting that. But I understand it, and I understand what the powers to be. As we all know, the state comes up with mandates that they have in their head, and they want us to, to put them together and make something of it. But the reality is, at the end of the day, we are going to end up determining where we stand, or a council, you know, a few years down. This is a 20-year project, okay? Let's stick, let's go back 20 years. What did San Dimas look like 20 years ago, 30 years ago? Somebody had to make that decision that they were going to be these numbers, and they were going to do it. You talk about the downtown specific plan, somebody came up with the idea that says we're going to put all our big commercial buildings on the outskirts of downtown, and we're going to build in this way. And that's exactly what we're looking at now, trying to take that idea that they had and keep that going and build in, inwards and residential. I don't know how many people go downtown in the evening, but you could go to downtown, right on Bonita, San Dimas Avenue, go to any of our restaurants downtown, Posetos, Fincenzo's, anywhere. Two years ago, three years ago, you didn't see people walking their dogs. But then when Village Walk came in, all of a sudden, people are creating that synergy, and that's what's going to happen to downtown eventually. We're going to have an old town and a new town, just a matter of time. Once that bridge comes in, things are going to change, change. I wanted to wake up this morning and say, you know what, I couldn't approve this. But the reality is, I've listened to the staff, I've listened to my fellow council member, and I could support the lower number. I'd have a hard time getting to the higher number of, but I could support the 3,100. And I do want to thank the staff and the consultants. I know it's been four years of, of a lot of talk, a lot of conversation, and you've even had a baby in the meantime. So, congratulations with that. So, I'll take any other comments, or I'll entertain a motion.
I guess I do have one additional question then. So, when we talk about the 3,100 number or the 3,300 number, what does the reasonable buildout look like? If we're never going to get to that number, because you look at that number on a piece of paper, and, and it, it is big. And I sympathize with the mayor in that we, as, you know, elected officials have a hard time selling that number or defending that number. I can, I can tell people all day long till I'm blue in the face that I don't think that that would ever get built out. But when they see that number in black and white on a piece of paper, that's their reality, and that's what they're looking at. So, I, I guess if we're, if we're looking at, let's say, both scenarios, what would the reasonable buildout of, of density look like when you mix in commercial and?
It's, it's difficult to say. I, I think a saved number is maybe like a 70% cut across the board of the 3,300, which I think at that point, it takes us down to about 2,500 units. But it's hard to say. I mean, in the staff report, we talked about two current applications that were actually, that were submitted, where it's two housing element sites within the downtown specific plan, and both of them have a max capacity of 550 units, and they proposed in 220. So, they're at 50% capacity of what those sites support. So, it, it's really hard to say, but I think, you know, ballpark maybe 70% of that number is more realistic. And like the mayor said, in the past cycles, we've had the RENA numbers and we really haven't had much development. I think that it, I wouldn't be honest in saying that I don't foresee new development coming in the near future. I think because of the transit station and the new housing laws that are put into place, I think you will see some more development, but not, nowhere near these high maximum buildout numbers.
I think, you know, looking at, I appreciate the estimate, because I think that's what the, the community needs to hear to, to hopefully alleviate some fears. And taking that lower number that the mayor has already talked about and throwing a, a filter of about 2,500. of about 70% on it gets us at about 2,170 units, which is thankfully, I think, a lot more reasonable than the 3,400 that we were looking at when we look at the report at face value. So I appreciate that. That gives a lot of context, I think.
No problem. One thing I'd also like to add is that, so in order to get these larger projects right, most of the sites in the downtown specific plan are smaller sites, so majority of these projects are going to require some assembly. In order for these parcels to be assembled, it does require a discretionary approval. That's a track map or a parcel map. So that will, currently the way the current ordinance is drafted right now, it would go up to city council. We are making some changes, but it would at minimum require discretionary review from the planning commission. So it won't be automatically that they can build these large projects because they have to assemble the land and will require that discretionary approval of the parcel or track map.
Louis, could you just take a brief moment to explain a little bit, a little bit more than you did, on what would, what is, if we decided not to approve this, what is our risk? And you used a particular phrase.
Sure. The term that I use, it's a builder's remedy. So essentially, when cities are out of compliance with the housing element, it opens the door for developers to come in and submit projects that don't have to comply with the current zoning or general plan laws. So they've termed that law builder's remedy. So essentially, someone can come in and propose a residential project at, you know, 100, 200 units, five stories, on a site that allows commercial, on a site that is zoned for church, for church or office uses, without having to come before the commission, without having to come before the city council, they get the right to do it because the city's out of compliance with the housing element. So we do have a deadline in the housing element that was set forth when we adopted it two years ago, September 27th. So the reason we have those urgency ordinances tonight is to get ahead of that deadline.
So the city, if city council fails to act on this, we do put the city in...
Lose control.
...in the eyes of somebody.
Yes.
In the target zone. All right, thank you.
What would it take to include language to require a development of, let's say, 40 units, to require 15% of them to be affordable? Is that a quick adjustment we could do?
I'll let a city attorney chime in on that, but I believe that it's something that we wouldn't be able to take action on tonight. It'd have to be a separate action, is my understanding.
Yeah, that's correct. That would involve creating an entirely new ordinance, an inclusionary housing ordinance, and that requires having alternative compliance methods also in that ordinance. So it's not something that we could draft or include in this tonight, but because we have the support of at least two council members, we can bring it back for a discussion at a later meeting.
Could we just do a study session regarding that in the future date?
Yeah, we can do that. I just want to make sure the council's had an opportunity to all speak, and then I can present some more information.
Anyone wish to announce a speech?
Yeah, I would just say to those residents who have concerns about looking at a number, it's that a number on a piece of paper regarding housing units is just a data point without a context or story. And so when you look at other places that have renovated or changed their shopping areas or living areas, such as Claremont or Pasadena, you know, they had probably huge numbers, especially Pasadena, attached to the redevelopment of their old town and the areas around it. And ultimately, when you look at how it was implemented and the housing units intermixed with the commercial spaces, I think we can all agree, it turned out really, really well, even though an initial number might have been really scary. I could just assure you that I know my colleagues in the city council really well. All of us are very focused, as well as the planning commission, on ensuring that whatever development is done with numbers, it's done in an elegant way that will fit the character of the town, that will not be a number that will stand out. So that's what I would say there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My recommendation is that you, from what I'm hearing, approve the item with the reduced number that was already evaluated in the AIR. Staff will come forth with a study session with regards to inclusionary zoning because that, you know, it goes along the lines of trying to provide affordable housing in our community. I think we got to take a look at the context of what we're operating. The number of bills just for next year is 32 that take effect after January 1, and all of them are focused on eroding cities' ability to stand in the way of additional housing or affordable housing. And that pattern has been in place now for a number of years and will continue. And so, you know, we've done our best to protect the sanctity of single-family properties. We've talked about equestrian use properties and passed a resolution to guide staff on how do we address those. But I think sometimes we have to consider some of the alternatives. For the cities, when we passed our housing element, we were literally one day shy of the deadline. A lot of cities did not, and those cities are facing tremendous number of projects with densities, you know, nine-story buildings next to single-story structures next to them without their control, and puts them in a position that's completely the opposite of what you're trying to accomplish. I think what we have to understand is the state is not going to stop trying to push affordable housing and housing density in general. While I don't agree with the fact that they're applying their rules across every community in a way that's not, that doesn't understand the uniqueness and reasonableness of what is appropriate in certain communities such as ours, especially when you consider high-fire-risk areas, traffic road capacities, and things of that nature, I think we need to lean in a little bit and actually decide to set our destiny as opposed to let to somebody else set it. And so by passing the downtown specific plan, it isn't the end of the conversation. You know, we're going to be kickstarting another housing element update here in a number of years, and I suspect that the change in the RENA number allocation process and what will get passed on to us will be something we'll have to deal with once again. I think what the downtown specific plan represents for us is, it's not a surprise. It was well thought out. We spent a lot of time building up to where we are today, and we weren't just looking at the housing element and where do we put affordable housing. We were really looking, just as our forefathers did when they looked at commercial around the outside, of where it made the most sense to put the density of housing, where we could activate an area of town that has been extremely difficult to activate with restaurants and shopping, which is a top priority of our community, while protecting other parts of our community that are single-family home-concentrated, and providing that affordable housing close enough to transit that allows individuals who may rent or live there to be able to access that transit to accomplish going to school, going to other jobs. And that the number of factors that would affect what the density actually will be here are tremendous. Just what's coming up in the November election could have a dramatic effect. If the proposition overturns the 1995 law about rent control on single-family or condo developments that are less than 50, that were built after 1995 passes, cities that pass rent control can have a dramatic impact on any property that's being built that includes density, that's rental units, because you can control what the rate of rent can be. So there's factors that we don't even know of right now that affect this. I think out of the 3,100 that we're looking at building, we're not going to come anywhere close to that in the current cycle. I think long-term, it may actually set us up better for the next housing element, to be better prepared to implement whatever changes the state's going to pass down to us, but on our terms and not necessarily theirs. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Go ahead.
So moved, with the lower number, the 3,185.
How do we have to read this out, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, we have a number of resolutions and ordinances to adopt. So the first order of business would be a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-68. That certifies the EIR, adopts the SEQA findings of facts, statement of overriding considerations, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Let's just do these one by one. So a motion for that.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Both, hearing none, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Mayor. The second is the Urgency Ordinance 1311, and we need to have a reading of this from the city clerk, and then a motion to adopt as modified for the reduced density alternative, reduced intensity alternative.
Urgency Ordinance 1311. An urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, California, approving zone change 24-02 and municipal code text amendment 24-07. A request to change the zoning designation of various parcels within the boundaries of the proposed downtown specific plan and amend Title 18 to create a new downtown specific plan chapter. Amend Chapter 18.140 Creative Growth Zone and associated cleanup items as required, along with an environmental impact report for the approval of the downtown specific plan, which will establish planning and zoning framework for the development and redevelopment of the downtown over the next 20 years.
Do I have a motion?
The motion being to waive further reading and adopt as modified for the reduced intensity alternative.
So moved, as Jeff outlined.
Second. Any further conversation? All approved?
Aye.
You want to oppose it? Hearing none, motion carries 5-0.
The third is the Ordinance 1312. This is just the regular ordinance, so we get a reading of the title from the city clerk, and then a motion to waive further reading and introduce with the reduced intensity alternative.
Ordinance 1312. An ordinance, excuse me, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, California, approving zone change 24-02 and municipal code text amendment 24-07. A request to change the zoning designation of various parcels within the boundaries of the proposed downtown specific plan and amend Title 18 to create a new downtown specific plan chapter. Amend Chapter 18.140 Creative Growth Zone and associated cleanup items as required, along with an environmental impact report for the approval of the downtown specific plan, which will establish planning and zoning framework for the development and redevelopment of the downtown over the next 20 years.
Move, we waive further reading, introduce Ordinance 1312 and amend as specified by the city attorney.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And the last resolution is Resolution 2024-69, approving general plan amendment. Planning staff, do we need to modify this one to, for the reduced intensity alternative, or is it appropriate just as it is? The general plan amendment.
Give me one second.
I think what we could do is a motion to approve that resolution as modified for the reduced intensity alternative as needed.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries 5-0.
Congratulations, everybody.
Guys did a great job. You've been working for a long time. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to take a short recess?
Yes. We're going to go in recess for five minutes. Five.
Conforming with the new designation. So allow industrial uses which are currently there and they will not become nonconforming. And then allow also for the new residential uses also. But you cannot mix both. It's either one or the other. Site fourteen identified in as the San Dimas Trails, which is located at four, four, four North Amelia Avenue, is currently occupied with two hundred and eighty-eight apartment complex, uh, unit complex development and with at-grade parking. The apartment complex owner has contacted the city about develop, about developing the southern portion of the site, which is highlighted in yellow there on the screen, uh, which is currently occupied by at-grade parking. This is the site the planning, the planning commission, uh, when reviewing, uh, this project, recommended that only the portion highlighted in yellow be rezoned, uh, and not the entire site. While the intent to rezone the entire site initially, um, the yellow portion was highlighted as part of the housing elements process to show the eight, to show HCD where the site could support additional units. Since the majority of the site is already developed, the commission had concerns with the entire site being developed to twenty-five units to the acre, which would yield approximately four hundred and forty-six units. The trails apartments consists currently of two hundred and eighty-eight units. Therefore, the entire site, uh, was, if the entire site was to be redeveloped, it would yield an additional hundred and seventy-eight units. While this is a possibility, the likelihood of the property owner, um, to demolishing two hundred and eighty-eight units that are in good, um, viable condition is very low. In addition, the full redevelopment of the site would require a full environmental review and a, a review of the project. While the rezoning will apply to the entire site, the number of units in the housing element inventory list, um, were derived from the development of, uh, the potential southern portion of the site. Therefore, should the development, should the city council agree with the commission's recommendation of only rezoning the southern portion, staff would apply an overlay zone over the southern portion of site fourteen, um, just where it's highlighted, that would allow the density of twenty-five units per acre, while the remaining of the site would remain at fifteen units to the acre. Site fourteen also requires a general plan amendment to change the land use designation, uh, from industrial to medium residential, um, with a density of eight point, from eight to twelve units per acre, to a newly created land use designation of high with a density of sixteen point one to twenty-five units per the acre, which would allow the additional units needed to meet the city's arena, um, number. The amendment will also apply to a separate parcel on the south portion of lot fourteen, which is here, highlighted in red, which is currently designated as commercial. We'll change it to, uh, the mixed-use residential industrial. In addition, the site requires a zone change. We'll change it from MF fifteen to MF twenty-five, meeting the requirements for the zoning. With, uh, uh, staff and the planning commission recommend the city council adopt urgency ordinance thirteen fourteen, resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy, and introduce ordinance fifteen, I'm sorry, thirteen fifteen, uh, approval of general plan amendment twenty-four oh three, zone change twenty-four oh three, municipal text amendment twenty-four oh eight. Um, if the council agrees with the planning commission's recommendation and votes tonight to approve the item, staff will revise the ordinance and resolution to reflect the change on site fourteen, only, um, creating an overlay zone over the yellow portion, the highlighted portion. Um, with that, that concludes staff's, uh, presentation.
Questions?
Yeah, I, I have one. Um, so I'm trying to understand the logic and the thinking of the planning commission because we have rezoned lots of places with development. Why, you know, and ostensibly, I would assume that a lot of those other places are not gonna tear down or change their, what's there. Uh, so why is it in this case, this was approached differently by the planning commission? What was the thinking behind that? What made this special versus the other sites that we have changed zoning on?
The, it comes down to, they want to avoid the possibility of the entire site being rezoned. They felt more comfortable with the number that was analyzed in the housing element, which was, uh, two and a half acres, which is the highlighted portion and not the entire site.
What are the potential drawbacks of only zoning the southern portion of this? Do you see a risk of perhaps getting a disjointed proposal down the road of what they could do with this site? Or what are some of the downsides for going along with this recommendation?
At this point, I wouldn't see any downside. The app, the, uh, previous, um, previous developers that had talked to the city and the apartment complex, uh, in conjunction with a developer, had looked at only this portion. And that's why we analyzed it this way. They weren't looking to demo or remove any of the existing units, just, uh, use the existing onsite parking area. And also, they were looking and talking to LA Signal to purchase the lower portion of their tailpiece of property. Um, when the apartments were developed at that time, the code required, um, recreational vehicle parking and boat parking for apartments. We no longer require that. So there's underutilized parking on this site.
I see. And when staff originally were proposing zoning the entire area, what led to the thinking of the entire area, not just the southern portion, as the planning commission had arrived
To be honest with you, so when we were working on the housing element, we like, we looked at the entire site, to be honest with you. Um, once we started engaging HCD and, um, talking about the sites, they questioned whether or not this site would actually redevelop because it's fully developed. So that's why we actually highlighted that portion of the parking area where it was underutilized and there's excess parking because of the boat and the RV parking. So we highlighted that to HCD to kind of satisfy their concern. Um, in that process, you know, thinking back now, I think that we could have proposed it as part of the housing element and still be okay. So the fact that the commission raised it now, it, it, it's probably a good thing, uh, kind of controls some of the development that would go on there, um, and we would still be in compliance with the housing element.
So there's real no downside, but is there really any upside either? It sounds like there's really no upside either, so.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I just had one question, um, and I just want to say thank you, the planning commission, everybody. There's a lot of, um, notes and, uh, comments that I think were very thoughtful through all of this. Um, I know you talked about the SP twenty-three sites, A and B. I just have a, I'm just curious, um, Mr. Ian Stewart, uh, is now the late Mr. Ian Stewart. And so I was curious if there had been any discussion. I know prior to his passing, um, he was very passionate about ensuring, uh, the ability to continue to use that property, um, for the use they were using it. And I think you mentioned that there would be no change, his property would not become nonconforming. Um, so is that still the case?
That is the case. And we did speak to the, um, I think the Ramal, not Rodriguez, the Ramirez.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and who occupy the property now, and they understood that we're not making them nonconforming. We also spoke to LA C Motors and spoke to them and let them know that we're not making any of the uses nonconforming and we're not deleting any of the uses, uh, previously discussed for the specific plan.
Thank you.
No amortization either.
Correct. There's, there's no amortizations, there's no forced change of use to be conforming either.
Okay. Any further questions? This time we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to council on this matter, please come up to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the council for comments.
I'm supportive of the recommendation from, um, the planning commission. It sounds like they had a discussion about it. I can't seem to identify any downside to following the recommendation. And, uh, so I want to give them credit for looking at this area with a fair amount of care and consideration, and their proposal seems very reasonable to me.
I had a quick question, um, as it regards, in regards to site fourteen. The trails will still have the same type of parking requirements. I'm assuming that this higher density, uh, will be built above the, whatever parking is going to exist.
Correct.
Okay. Yes, I'm very, very appreciative of the recommendation that the planning commission made. Thank you very much for looking, you know, towards the future of San Dimas. I am definitely supportive of that, and I appreciate to the alignment to the housing element and fulfilling our goals as a city. So, yeah, I'm.
Is that a motion?
If my, if the council is ready, if anybody has not further, I will make a motion to approve. I'm sorry, you're gonna have to read the ordinance for me with the, uh, planning commission's
Thank you, Councilmember Burtakos. Uh, so to take these, we have a number of ordinances and resolutions again, so, uh, to reflect that motion, um, let's do each one of these at once. So the first would have, we would have the city clerk read urgency ordinance number thirteen fourteen, the title of that ordinance, and then, uh, move to adopt it, wait for the reading and adopt it with the change recommended by the planning commission.
I'm sorry, before we go through this, is the property owner up here? No? 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 Okay. Well, I was just gonna say, thank you. This was initiated by them, is that correct? You were saying? To look at developing that southern portion of that lot?
For the trails?
Yeah.
It was a discussion we had had, so we knew they were open to doing it, correct?
Well, I'm just gonna, on record, say thank you to them too. Often, property owners and developers are, are sometimes villainized in these types of things, but I think this is a good example of something that makes a lot of sense that's gonna benefit the community. So I appreciate, uh, their, uh, insight and, and willingness to do something that I think is in great alignment. And, uh, I too applaud planning and everybody that spent time on this and staff. Thank you.
All right, we'll move forward. Urgency ordinance thirteen fourteen.
Urgency ordinance thirteen fourteen. An urgency ordinance to the city council of the city of San Dimas County of Los Angeles, California. Approving zone change twenty-four dash zero three and municipal code text amendment twenty-four dash zero eight. A request to change the zoning designation of housing element site number fourteen, three parcels, from MF dash fourteen to MF dash twenty-five, and amend title eighteen to allow multifamily residential and specific plan twenty-three to reflect the proposed zoning designation changes and associates, and associated code cleanups as required to bring the code into compliance with the city's housing element and state law.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries five zero.
I'm sorry, was the motion?
Motion by Burtakos, second by Vienna.
So the second item is to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy, making the general plan amendment. We don't need a reading for that one, so it's, uh, wave, it's, uh, just to adopt that with the recommendation made by the planning.
So moved.
Second.
Any further question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries five zero.
The third is, we need the city clerk to read the title of ordinance thirteen fifteen and then wait for the reading and introduce with the recommendation made by the planning
Ordinance thirteen fifteen, an ordinance to the city council of the city of San Dimas County of Los Angeles, California, approving the zone change, approving zone change twenty-four dash zero three and municipal code text amendment twenty-four dash zero eight. A request to change the zoning designation of housing element site number fourteen, three parcels, from MF fifteen to MF twenty-five, and amend title eighteen to allow multifamily residential and specific plan twenty-three to reflect the proposed zoning designation changes and associated code cleanups as required to bring the code into compliance with the city's housing element and state law.
Move. We introduce ordinance thirteen fifteen, wait for the reading and, uh, introduce.
Have a second?
Second.
Just to be clear with the change made by the planning commission.
That's, yeah, that's exactly right.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries five zero. Thank you. We'll move on to, uh, public hearing number three.
Uh, thank you, Mary. This one, uh, Marco Spinoza, planning manager, will also be presenting the item.
This is for properties located at three oh nine West Allen Avenue, nine seventeen North Cataract and nine twenty-nine North Cataract.
Correct. Thank you. Good evening again, honor of mayor and council member. For your consideration tonight is the development of, uh, sixty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-nine square foot warehouse office multi-tenant building on two and a half acres site located at the northwest corner of Cataract Avenue and Allen Avenue. The development of this project requires the approval of the following applications and the adoption of the prepared initial study and made it mitigated negative declaration. It requires the zone change, uh, application twenty-one oh one, changing the, um, land use classification of light agriculture to light industrial M one. A lot merger twenty-one oh one, consolidating three lots into one. Uh, DPRB, uh, for the development of the warehouse of the site and the tree removal permit for the removal of seventeen mature trees. The development plan review board on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three reviewed, uh, DPRB case twenty-one, uh, oh two and the tree removal twenty-one oh four, and voted to recommend approval to the city council. And the planning commission at their May fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting, reviewed all the mentioned development applications, including the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, and voted for one to recommend approval to the city council. The site is a two and a half acre site currently consisting of three lots and were developed with nine single-family residents. The residents were demolished in twenty twenty-three due to public nuisance issues. The property is surrounded by industrial zoned parcels to the north, east, and west, and residential, single-family residential, uh, to the south, which are zone SFA, which is single-family agriculture. The general plan land use designation of the subject site is industrial, which is consistent with the proposed zone change of light industrial M one. Uh, so therefore, the, uh, the general plan does not need any change as part of this The subject site is currently zone AL, which is light agriculture, which is not consistent with the proposed use or the general plan land use designation of industrial. Therefore, a zone change is required. Zoning, the zoning designation should be in line with the general plan and land use designation. The applicant, as mentioned, is requesting a zone change to M one. The existing light agriculture zone allows for one single-family residence per lot. The subject lots were considered to be nonconforming due to the fact that they were developed with nine single-family residents. Six more than one was allowed per the zone. As mentioned, these homes shown on the pictures were demolished in twenty twenty-three. By changing the current zone, uh, from, uh, light agriculture to, uh, light manufacturing, which does now, does not allow residential use, there will be a no, let, no net loss. Sorry about that. Um, there will be a net, uh, be a net loss of three allowable units per the city. Per state law SB eight, the zone change from AL to M one cannot incur unless another property is rezoned to increase the residential density in the city by at least three units. With the approval of tonight's downtown specific plan, the loss of the three units has been accomplished, accommodated, making the project in compliance with SB eight. The project is also subject to SB twelve eighteen, which in part requires cities, um, to not approve a development project that proposes demolition, demolition of occupied or vacant, uh, projected units unless specific requirements for new units are satisfied. Uh, for compliance with AB twelve eighteen, the city attorney developed a condition number twelve, which is in your resolution packet, in your packet, uh, under resolution twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, requiring the replacement of the units to be developed prior to or concurrently with the proposed warehouse development. And that's on page, uh, one thousand three hundred ninety-two of your packet. The project will consist, um, will be accessed from Allen Avenue and Cataract. Truck loading docks will be located on the west elevation of the, um, of the building and will serve proposed, the proposed units. The new ten-foot-high concrete tilt-up screen wall and an eight-foot-high wrought iron fence, uh, will be installed at two locations to secure portions of the parking lot. In addition to the site improvements, the applicant will be required to install a sidewalk along Cataract Avenue and require, uh, the undergrounding of existing overhead lines on both street frontages. The warehouse will consist of two units. Unit one will be twenty-four thousand one hundred ninety-three square feet in size with a two thousand square foot mezzanine. Unit two will be thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-six square feet of floor area with also a two thousand square foot mezzanine. Each unit will also have a thousand square foot office area. The development complies with the development standards in the M one zone, such as, um, front yard setback, side yard, and rear yard, building heights, lot depths, all mentioned in your staff report. Um, it also will comply with the parking requirements. The project will, as mentioned, will be accessed, um, from two driveways, one located on Allen Avenue and one off Cataract Avenue. In an effort to reduce, um, impacts on Allen Avenue, condition number seven three has been included in your packet, um, which will read that trucks require, that will require truck egress and egress, ingress and egress be limited to Cataract Avenue. Um, and the applicant will install signage and striping improvements to prevent truck ingress and egress from Allen Avenue. Um, and that condition in your staff report will be, need to be modified slightly, which I'll mention at the end. The site also has a total of twenty-five trees on site, of which twenty-three are proposed for removal. Um, the applicant will replace, um, uh, the removed trees with, um, over forty trees. The two trees preserve, uh, proposed for, for preservation will be the pine noted as number two in the northeast corner of the site and the California pepper noted as number eight along the east property line. The proposed building will have varying heights, including tower-like elements at various locations to break up the massing, and will have a total height of forty-one feet. The design of the building incorporates various architectural elements to help break up the building mass and elevation, which include eighteen-inch decorative cornices and raised parapet walls, steel trellises beneath the recessed archways, installed medallions, uh, above glazed archways, and also dark bronze-colored mulleons for storefront windows and doors. Also, they'll have decorative downspouts, decorative steel canopies over entrances and doorways, and also four-foot-high base molding, uh, with smooth finish coating. Um, and they also have accent colors as shown here on the color material board. The proposed development is a project pursuant, uh, pursuant in the, uh, project pursuant to the California Quali, California Environmental Quality Act, which is called CEQA. An initial study was prepared to determine possible environmental impacts. On the basis of the initial study, which was, which indicates that all potential environmental impacts from the project be less than significant or could be mitigated at a level of insignificant, the MND was prepared pursuant CEQA guidelines. The MND was circulated for the required twenty-day public review period from March seventh, twenty twenty-three until March twenty-seventh, uh, ending, it's also included in your agenda packet. Uh, we did receive two comments, um, during the public review period, and also, uh, there were two comments, uh, two letters received, one on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, and one on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, which were provided for you in your packet. Um, in response to comments, uh, and response, and responses to these comments were prepared and also provided for you. Staff in the planning commission recommend the city council approve ordinance thirteen thirteen, approving zone change twenty-one oh one and resolution twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, approving DPRB twenty-one oh two, lot merger twenty-one oh one, and tree removal permit twenty-one oh four. Also, resolution twenty, twenty-four dash twenty-eight, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation, mitigated measures. Um, as mentioned, we want to, um, amend condition seventy-three to add the words ingress after the word ingress, uh, to limit truck access off Allen Avenue. Um, this concludes my presentation, and the applicant, Ignacio Crespo, uh, from OC Design and Engineering, is here to answer any question. His attorney is also here, and also with us tonight is, um, Ultra Systems, the, um, consulting company who prepared the MND, is also here to answer any questions you may have. That concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions of staff? Prior to opening the public hearing, do we want to have the, uh, owner, uh, of the property speak? Or you want to have that during the public hearing? Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing at this time? Anyone wishing to speak at this time?
Mayor, we do have one speaker card that was turned in.
What, what's her name?
I cannot pronounce this. Okay, thank you.
Hi, uh, Marjana Boobo. Yeah. Um, I just, I want to be really quick. I didn't intend on, um, prepare, or making public comment because we submitted the written comments. Uh, we did just want to clarify, um, based on the letters that we did see, um, submitted today. Um, so again, my name's Marjana Boobo. Um, I represent the, uh, SAFER, Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, and its members, uh, who live and work in and around the city of San Dimas. Um, SAFER maintains its request for the city council to decline approving the MND because the MND violates CEQA. Um, and I'll just a couple, cover a couple of these, uh, deficiencies that SAFER raised in their comment letters. Um, so first, um, we received the responses to comments on Friday. I know that, um, the applicant's attorney, uh, mentioned that we were sending a last-minute , uh, comment letter. Just to clarify, we didn't receive any of the information, including responses to comments, until Friday evening, so we didn't have until Monday morning realistically to, um, review and then crank out a comment letter to really adequately, um, assess the issues that were raised in the response to comments. But generally, um, the comment that we submitted yesterday was related to energy impacts, um, and specifically for CEQA, um, the analysis of energy impacts included in the MND does not comply. SAFER believes that, you know, according to CEQA, you are required to analyze whether the project will result in wasteful, inefficient, or unnecessary consumption of energy resources. Um, the MND is transparent of the project's increased consumption of natural gas, fossil fuels, and other non-renewable energy sources, but very little is provided in the actual MND document, um, as to why the project cannot, for example, feasibly integrate, um, more renewable energy infrastructure, um, for the project's construction and operation. I know that the September twenty-fourth comment letter, um, know that the September 24 comment letter submitted by the applicant mentions that, in addition to complying with Title 24, that the warehouse project will implement additional energy-efficient measures. These measures were not included in the MND. We believe that this is new information that, you know, the public hasn't had time to adequately assess, to review, and to comment on. And there's a list of things that, you know, like I said, I just found it, like, right when the meeting started at 7:00, so haven't had time to really review it. And so we feel like there is, this kind of underlines our argument that we're making, that the MND's analysis of energy impacts is not adequate. It's not giving enough information for the public to review and comment on. You know, we've successfully advocated for more renewable energy integration in other warehouse projects that we've reviewed across the state and in other local jurisdictions, including the requirement to install solar roofs to integrate electric vehicle charging. And I know that the applicant had mentioned in his letter that it's going to, you know, make it solar rooftop-ready, or it's going to be providing potential future capability for vehicle charging. But those two are different. There's a difference between being solar-ready and actually including solar. And so, overall, I know I'm kind of rambling, but I, we want to stress the importance of CEQA and the, the legal standard for mitigated negative declaration being that where there is potentially significant impact, potentially significant impacts as a result of the project, those disputes and those disagreements must be resolved in an EIR. And yeah, with that, I just want to reiterate that we wish we had additional time to review these comments. Unfortunately, City Council is going to be voting tonight. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions?
Those were all the speaker cards, Mayor.
Anyone wishing to speak to this matter?
John Ebner again. I feel the meeting's not going quite nearly long enough, so I figured I'd talk a little bit. But no. So I have two thoughts on, on the project. The first and main one I came up here to talk about is affordable housing. And if I understood correctly, it sounds like staff and the city attorney have taken AB 1218 into consideration, which is for replacement of affordable housing that was demolished since 2020. So SB 8 talked about replacement housing, and 1218 clarified a lot of things. And basically, if I'm understanding correctly, and maybe I could be assured that this is what the condition says, that, well, first of all, there were nine units. One was vacant for so long that I don't think it was occupied in the last five years, and it was really falling down. So there were eight units. I believe all of them were affordable. I got to know one of the residents who did not leave when the owners urged everybody to leave, and they were definitely in the affordable, you know, in the lower-income category. And so I feel that the owner knew or should have known that all of the other residents were also in the low income, and if they didn't, it would be willful ignorance on their part not to find out because they were the owners of the, of the property. So assuming that the eight units were affordable, they were demolished since 2020, which is what AB 1218 says is the, is the timeline. And so those are, need to be replaced. They need to be, the proponent needs, I have some language here, the proponent needs to ensure that the required replacement housing is developed prior to or concurrently with the development project, if the development project under consideration is not a housing project. It's not a housing project. So the developer, I assume, is going to ensure that before or during the development of this project, there is that replacement housing. And if that's the case, I am completely satisfied with that because one of the things that we don't want to do is take steps backwards. We have affordable housing and let it be demolished and not replace it. I mean, we're trying to retain it and increase it. So that was one thing. The only other thing is that I'm not sure if a warehouse operation is in the best interest of not only the community, but especially the residents on the other side of the street. Allen Avenue there, you've got, it's all residential on the south side of the street, and I'm seeing, you know, four or so bay, big bay doors for trucks to come and, and be coming in and out. Don't know what the conditions or limits on their operation would be, but I, I just think warehouse operation is not the best use for that piece of property. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council about this matter? No? Okay, we'll close the public hearing?
Mayor, the applicant?
Yeah, applicant has, has an opportunity to come up, but if he wants to, but I've asked
Good evening. My name is Ignacio Crespo. I'm the architect for the project. I misunderstood. I thought you were going to call me after the public hearing, so that's why I came back to my seat. But I just want to thank staff. This has been a long process, and we've been here before many times. Hopefully, this is the lucky one, and we just want to appeal to your consideration to approve our project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to the, to the council? Okay, sir?
Assuming that this is the opportunity to respond to the opposition comment. Damon Mamelakis, Arm Brewster, Goldsmith, and Delvec, on behalf of the applicant, I just wanted to address a few of the points that SAFER raised a few moments ago. On the issue of the last-minute Ultra Systems response that they saw Friday night, that had nothing to do with the comments that they dropped, or sandbagged us with, really with, last night regarding energy. The discussion in the Ultra Systems memo concerned other comments regarding GHG and air quality and health risk assessment. So to say that they didn't have an opportunity to review the document to be able to come up with their energy impact analysis comments is completely misleading. They've had months to drop a comment letter about the energy impacts. Second, on the issue of Title 24 and the additional measures that we are going above and beyond Title 24 that were put in the letter that we provided to you today, SAFER misunderstands the MND versus the measures. The MND energy analysis in the policy and plans consistency looked at Title 24 and determined that the project would be consistent with Title 24. Separately, and that, and that's all they needed to do. Separately, SAFER has alleged that we don't go above and beyond Title 24 and that we need to. So we provided a list of measures that are above and beyond Title 24. That's, they didn't need to be considered in the policy plans and consistency analysis in the MND. Those are two separate issues. And on the measures, the inclusion of the measures is no basis for recirculating the MND or for requiring an EIR. The test for recirculation of an MND is not met, and they provided no substantial evidence in any event to support it. And lastly, SAFER misrepresents what the standard of review is for an MND. It's not just, oh, we think there might be a potential significant impact. You have to show a fair argument based on substantial evidence. They have provided no substantial evidence of an energy impact. And as the Ultra System memo concluded, they provided no credible evidence, no substantial evidence, of an air quality or health risk impact.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this point? I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the council.
All right, well, I guess I'll weigh in. So one is, I want to thank staff, Planning Commission, and the applicant for your, your time and energy in this property. It's been, it's been a process. This is a difficult project, and it's a difficult site. I think the building architecture is beautiful, so I'll get that out of the way. Looks very nice. I think there was a lot of time and energy spent on the specifics and the detail, and a lot of thought given to it. That being said, I have concerns and agree with one of the dissenting members from the Planning Commission as it relates to traffic pertaining to this particular site. And this traffic issue has been a persistent issue as it relates to this property. And I think that that is a, it's, and it's, it's a challenging piece of property on a challenging street. Allen in and of itself is just continuously becoming more and more traveled. And, and I have concerns regarding, you know, 18-wheeler trucks or similar traveling that street, and the impact that that's going to have. I understand, as staff presented it, the mitigation efforts, you know, as it relates to having those ingress and egress off of Cataract, and I appreciate that. But to cut to the chase, and I, I'm sorry to say, I cannot support the zone change. I don't believe that this is, and this kind of goes back to really just the challenges of the parcel. And that is that, you know, that parcel, there's been different proposals related to this, and, and the two things that at least it comes back to for me, and I live not too far from this parcel, is the challenges related to conformity with the surrounding area, coupled with the, the traffic impact or potential adverse traffic impact on that space. I think that, you know, for me personally, and, and you know, and I know the Planning Commission, I know there's been a lot of time spent on this, so I'm not making these comments lightly. I had to drive by it again today to really kind of take this all in and then hear what we were going to hear at the public hearing. I, I have a lot of concern for, for what goes in there because, number one, it's co-located next to a school, and that, to me, provides a level of concern for just anything that's going to have an adverse traffic impact. And commercial traffic impact or industrial traffic impact, to me, tends to commute a little bit differently than residents. And so that concerns me. But the other thing is, is that there were homes on there. And I vividly remember when the previous council had talked about this and the demolition of those properties was discussed, I seem to recall there was, there was some discussion that we were going, assurances that we were going to see those homes somewhere. Now, whether that materialized into, you know, being spread out in the, in the housing or in the downtown specific plan, or wherever those replacement houses went, fine. But I still think, and I think I've mentioned in the past in other, in other avenues, that I feel the best thing for that space potentially, and keep, keep in mind, there was a, I think there was a, a public storage unit consideration, and then there was, and there was height concerns, and I, and I heard the height concerns again from the Planning Commission related to this project. And, and then there was concerns about traffic and usage, and that was probably a minimal usage property. That being said, my personal feeling is a mixed-use property with residential and creative growth type of uses is probably a, a use that I could get behind, that I think aligns with not just the housing interest for the community, but I think puts people that are invested in the co-location of, of that space. The other part is, is that I do think, as, as discussed earlier in another matter, is that there's an opportunity there for an affordability component, and also there's a very unique academic setting that's near there, co-located near the district. And so I think all of those things kind of play into an opportunity in my mind. Understanding, some people may have concerns about spot zoning and other things, but at the end of the day, I think there's opportunity to do like Grove Stations Project, where you could potentially have some of the businesses that are currently hit out inside of the industrial complexes, breweries, and other things, that could maybe be more palatable and create more synergy to serve the residents that are in that space. And you still have some equestrian use that traverses that area. So those are my thoughts and my comments. You know, I apologize, it may not be what you wanted to hear. But I, I got to be honest, that, that place, to me, is, is one of the most challenging sites in the city right now because just where it's located and what it's surrounded by. And, and frankly, I wish we could expand Allen, because I think in my mind, if we were able to get more throughput on Allen, I could feel differently about it. But, but I think that is a major hurdle to overcome. And, and I also would say, and I would caution, that even the, the exploration of a, some sort of mixed-use project with residential or live-work should not be overly densified because that, too, would create an adverse traffic impact, but perhaps, perhaps not the same that it would in a commercial space. So those are my, my comments.
If I can go ahead and follow that, many of my notes are your concerns as well. I definitely had concerns about traffic in that area. I have concerns about the height of the building, you know, 37 feet on the main tower, or main building, 41 feet on the tower, where the second tallest building on that street is 32 feet. I have issues about vacancies in these light industrial buildings. You know, are we at full capacity with all of the industrial buildings that we have? I don't know that answer, but I think it'd be safe to assume probably not. It's a, it's a complex piece of land because obviously we want to develop, and we want to do what's good for San Dimas. But as I was going through this, I kept searching for my why, and I couldn't really find my why. And so then I just go back to, is this good for San Dimas? And I'm not so sure that it is. I know that it's an area surrounded by other industrial, but for me, it's not good enough to say, let's just build more industrial because there's already industrial there. I think we're facing problems from the industrial part with the traffic and everything, and I don't wish to add to it. So this project is not something that I can support right now.
I had a question for staff. Do we have any kind of projections in terms of the tax implications or the tax impact from this project on the city revenue?
Okay, I can speak a little bit to that. We have to understand that the tax that's being paid is generally going to be property tax for a business like this.
Yeah.
We only collect about 6.8 cents on average, so for every million dollars evaluation, we're only getting 6.8 cents of what they're paying in property tax. Then you have some of the other intangible or equipment they may purchase. There may be a one-time upside for stuff they may buy internally, but it's not a whole lot. And I don't believe it's a, going to be a sales tax generating business. We'll see some business license tax as additional revenue. But in terms of, from the economic development perspective, an industrial use is not a good use of very valuable land where housing is amongst the highest value to a community like ours.
Thank you. That answers my question.
I guess I'll just say that this, I would echo what, what Councilmember Vienna was saying. This is a really challenging piece of property because it's located smack dab in the middle of a very long stretch between major north-south streets that lead to ingress and egress from freeways, whether it be the 57 or the 210 freeways. And that means that on this very narrow, small road, we're going to have, you know, a much heavier industrial impact than currently exists with all of the industrial that's surrounding it. As people have pointed out, there's industrial around there, but it's all light industrial. And this would be an intensification of the industrial usage in that area. Unfortunately, it's not anywhere close to an ingress, an ingress to a freeway, which would make it maybe mitigate some of that impact. Looking in the area, the only places that I can see that have industrial loading dock-style semi-truck loading facilities is Walmart, which is in the city of Glendora, on the west side of the 57 freeway, right off the off-ramp. And, you know, not in the general vicinity of, of this particular property. So I think that this would bring a element of traffic. I don't know that it would be a particularly intense traffic because it would depend on the business that's there. I mean, who knows how many trucks per day, per week? I mean, who knows how many trucks per day, per week may traverse to and from this property. But I do think that it is an intensification of that industrial use that that street, I don't know that it can support. And I really want to respect the, not only the light industrial I've talked a lot about, but the residents on the south side of that street. I don't know that they would appreciate too much if we were to add to that industrial usage.
I too was on the council a few years back when we entertained a project there involving a storage-type facility. There was concern from the neighborhood, there was concern about the fact that we were removing eight homes, you know, affordable housing there. And going through the housing element at that period of time and as well as our green numbers, there was that concern of losing those, even though the number didn't sound good, eight. It just moved us in a direction that wasn't the direction of recapping homes. And then with the storage facility, there was a concern about traffic. Well, if you travel on Allen Avenue on a daily basis, you can find that you could be three or four or five blocks backed up waiting for the lights, especially eastbound at 4:00 in the afternoon. And quite honestly, I don't know the description of an 18-wheel truck, about a 57-foot, you know, trailer or something like that, but it just does not seem to be the right idea to be putting on that street that's already got some real traffic problems already. And the height of the buildings is questionable already. You know, they're pretty big-sized buildings. The storage facility that was talking was basically, I think, even one story higher than that. But that was one of the reasons why we turned it down then. I just don't see a warehouse using large trucks, large buildings, it should be compatible to that area. And as was mentioned, we do have a school real close to that area, and I've heard from, and even though they're not here tonight, I've heard from several members of that community saying, what are you guys doing? You already know we have traffic constraints. So I can't support this project at this point in time. I would hope that a project with lesser type manufacturing, something smaller, where maybe we're not getting 18-wheeler trucks, would look at it. Or, it's like somebody said, a mixed-use project that could come in there with some housing above it. But at this point in time, I couldn't support this. So I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we deny the zone change outlined, 21-0001, as outlined in ordinance 1313, and take no further action on this item.
Second thought.
Any other questions?
If I could recommend an amendment to that motion. If the council wanted to deny this project, yes, you would move to deny zone change 21-0001. But then we would also need to bring back resolution number 2024-27 as a resolution of denial of the LM and the DPRB and the TRP, and we'd put that on the next consent calendar.
Very well, amend the motion to take that action.
Second thought.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Hearing none, motion carries 5-0. We'll move on to oral communications. Members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes, hours may be determined Seeing none, we will move forward. City manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Initially, it wasn't going to have a city manager report, but I think the conversation the council just had is apropos. There's an Assembly Bill 98 that was approved and is before the governor for his consideration of approval that specifically relates to truck routes and addresses industrial types of locations like the one we just talked about. And as I was looking at the analysis of that bill, for any of the size buildings that are less than 250,000, which is related to this one, and where there is a sensitive receptor within 900 feet, which is a home, which is considered a sensitive receptor, that there are certain requirements that need to occur. And one of those requirements is that the bays need to be pointing away from the sensitive receptors, which in terms of this project was not oriented that way. But in reading that bill and in looking at this item, preparing for the council agenda, a grander issue came up that's along the lines of discussions that the council has had previously regarding equestrian uses residential. There are other properties across the entire city that would allow for larger-scale manufacturing and trucks such as this to occur, and to allow that to go through our city that may or may not be close to easy access to freeways and things of that nature. So I've talked internally with staff, and I think it does warrant a study session of the council, which we will schedule, to talk in more grand view, the allowable uses when it comes to manufacturing, or there are other restrictions that we want to put into place that protect against what level of manufacturing do we want in our community? Because as we talked about the economic development, the land we have here is extremely valuable. One, from the perspective of somebody who lives here and wants the quality of life, absolutely. But also from an economic development perspective, that whatever we put on a piece of property drives multiple factors, whether it's economic in terms of revenue generation that we receive, or the other aspect of economic, what kind of use can I put in there, and is that important for our community? Now, there's a difference between a 67,000 or 100,000 square foot facility for manufacturing or logistics, and a smaller one that allows a mom and pop to be able to go in and start a business at a very low rent rate and be potentially successful, or live nearby in San Dimas where their business is in the same city they live. So I think that conversation is something in keeping with the council desires, and we'll be scheduling that here shortly.
Okay, thank you. Any further? Seeing none, Jeff?
I have no reports, Mayor.
Council's members, meetings attended at the expense of the local agency?
I went to, I went to one. I went to my first meeting. I went to the Foothill Gold Line meeting, and, you know, the Gold Line Station, the A-line is near completion, so discussion was fairly minimal. But you can see that they are testing the trains, that is ongoing, so please be careful and mindful of the tracks. And they are expecting to have station ribbon cutting sometime in the spring. So at my next meeting, I will have a better update on that date, and I hope that everyone joins us there on that day.
Thank you. Hearing no more, Mr. Nagano.
No meetings attended, but this is correct request for future items? Is that what we're talking about? Thank you. I just wanted to extend my heartfelt gratitude to our first responders who managed the line fire and kept us all up to date in terms of all the communications that have been going on with a quickly evolving situation. I also want to thank our city manager for keeping us in the loop, city staff, and express my gratitude. I also want to, on a different note, highlight to residents, we have, just because summer has ended and we have a lot of our events, such as the concert series and everything else, come to a close with the end of summer, this weekend is our annual 5K, I believe. Are you running it? Good, okay. Well, there's two of us that I know of that are running it. I'm hoping you came back fit from your FBI thing, you'll be joining us. So that'll be happening this Saturday. It's not too late to register, if I remember correctly. So you can go to the city's website, you can find information there to sign up. And I hope to see you running around the downtown this Saturday. With that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn it back to you.
Mr. Weber?
I'll be at the 5K as well. I have been doing a couple of training runs and making sure that I'm in good shape. I sincerely hope that we see Councilmember Vienna out there. He said that he's been PTing for the past however many weeks in Quantico, so he should be ready to go, from what I understand. But unless he skipped all those, I'm not sure. He hasn't told us yet, but hope to see you out there. It's a great event for those who haven't been, and I've signed up not only for the 5K, but my nine-year-old's going to run the one-mile fun run with me afterwards, and it'll be a good event for everybody, even the little ones. So look forward to seeing you there.
Well, now that you bring that up, I did volunteer to help, but I don't know if helping means I'm running or if I'm doing something else. So am I running? I'll come ready, I'll start practicing tomorrow. Also, that day is the Seroptimist Trivia Night. This is a fundraiser that San Dimas Liver and Seroptimist holds, this is our second year, and it raises money for Benita's children for clothing and providing school supplies to children within our school district. It raises money for scholarships for women within our community who are head of households who just need a little help, who are pursuing their education. And we also do a Dream It Be It program where we mentor young women in our community on how to set goals, prepare for careers, and really just face adversity head-on. So if you are very good at trivia, my team is booked up, but there are teams that would definitely like to have you, so just let me know if anyone's interested in that. And I will see you all Saturday at the Run, running or not, I'm not sure yet.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I respond to the 5K comments, invitations, yes, yes. There is something, you know, again, thank you, council, for the opportunity to go to the academy and do all that. There was something, one of many things, that I did have the opportunity to learn about, and I hoped and intend to share with you as time goes on. But there's something I would ask if you'd support me in having staff research and bring forward a presentation at a later date, an innovative program from the community of Sierra Vista in Arizona. And this program, Cliff Notes version of it, is a program called Better Bucks, and you can look it up online. It's a partnership that was initiated by the city and the police department to address a couple things. But one of the things most, I think, uniquely and awesome that this program did was take the issue of panhandling and tackle it in a creative way by creating a nonprofit and having a community campaign partnered between the law enforcement agency and the city and the local grocers to be able to allow people to meaningfully donate to a nonprofit, and then work out arrangements with the local grocers and stores so that people weren't panhandling, getting money to go buy drugs, but they actually would be able to go and get issued basically what becomes like an EBT or a credit card. And that money that's donated from the community then is issued to them in the form of gift certificates or a card that they can actually go utilize. And it helped abate their panhandling problem and a narcotics problem. So I would ask if council is interested, they started with Better Bucks, and now they're doing something called, they call Better Work. And Better Work is a program where they take people who may be homeless and identify community service jobs that can be done to better the community, and they actually in turn be able to give them a stipend for assisting the community in turn for their service. And then they have another program called Better Meals. And the Better Meals program, and all of these can be found on their website, is to assist people who may not be able to get meals when they go to school, youth specifically. And people can donate to that initiative, and then that also provides a benefit. So I think it's a, I've been very leery of social programs as it relates to what the city gets involved in or not, but I think this is a program that's not too different from like Meals on Wheels and some of the other stuff that we've done that may also have a positive public safety impact. And I think it's just worth, if nothing else, just looking at it. And I don't know if you guys are interested, then I'd like to have staff.
I always welcome ideas from other cities. As you know, I always ask what, you know, who's doing this and who's doing that. So I support that. I would also just ask, along with that, I don't really have a good handle on the panhandling situation in the city. So as part of that, I just want to understand the scope of the problem that it would try to solve, along with an examination of the program. I think that's a great thing, whenever our colleagues, council members, see things working in other cities, they bring it forth. A lot of people have spent a lot of money and time solving other problems that are similar to ours. There's no reason why not, we should just have a chance to look at it.
It sounds intriguing. I think I've seen some anti-panhandling signs around other cities with a QR code to donate directly to nonprofits in the area that serve the homeless community. And I'd also like to point out that you have not answered the 5K question.
I'm about to.
And I think that this was all a ploy to buy time to think of an excuse.
So Newport Beach actually has signs near some of their locations in Costa Mesa to abate.
What about the 5K?
I'm getting there, jeez. Okay, look, here's the deal. I'd like to draw your attention to an email from city staff on August 21st that actually outlines that we're all supposed to present awards. So I think Councilmember Tacos is on point that we all actually have jobs, I don't want to leave the mayor alone. I thought the Pro Tem would be there. And the thing is this, that while the two of you may be able to finish that thing before we have to present awards, you're going to be there waiting for me a minute. So I will participate in the 5K, telling staff I may not be there to present awards, but just have a lot of water, Gatorade, and maybe an AED at the finish line for me, and we'll see you there. And I don't know what I'm going to wear, so I'm going to have to figure out that costume.
We'll take care of it. We'll also have Dial Ride available just in case.
Thank you. Good looking out. Other than that, you know, again, I just really want to express my sincere thanks to a lot of the community members, the staff, you know, I really, I think there was only one session for a matter that popped up that I was able to participate in, and thank you to the city attorney and council for obliging me there. But, you know, at the end of the day, things have gone well. I appreciated the notes and the emails and all that from folks that stayed in touch. It really helped the 10 weeks pass, and I didn't miss the mayor that much, he's over there yelling at me, but the bottom line is, no, I was very, I missed all of you guys, so it's really good to be home. And to be honest, outside of the academy, you know, while it was 10 weeks and our basically Sunday nights through, Thursday nights required us to sleep on base, on the weekends, we had the opportunity to go out and explore. So I had an opportunity to go to a lot of the battlefields out there, I had an opportunity to go to a number of the museums, but I had also a lot of opportunity to go to small towns. And I will tell you that looking at those small towns, and when you look at the history that some of these towns have, you know, it looks so wild to just go to a place and I was counting it, I mean, I went to Virginia, Pennsylvania, Delaware, Maryland, Miami, West Virginia.
What kind of music do they play at the Academy Awards when we're over?
Yeah. Look, my point is this, we're already not going to make dinner, and you're making me run a 5K on Sunday or Saturday, whatever. So all I'm going to say is that, you know, vacancies, you know, local business, local economies, there are places that are really hurting outside, throughout this country. And, you know, we are very fortunate that, you know, we talk about a lot of these things here, but as a community, we are very blessed with a lot of the things that we do have here. And, you know, as difficult as some of these things, even the decisions we made tonight, I think, you know, I feel very fortunate to be able to be here in this town and very grateful. So thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to be here, because I also had a lot of time to think about all of that. So I know the mayor's about to give me the, give me.
Thank you, thank you.
Huh? You know, Patrick, I'm just, yeah, I'm putting you out there with Tim Hepburn right now on the record.
I just want to remind everybody, including Ryan, that we have a closed session, this could take us quite some time, so we're going to, we're going to cut him off, and he'll come back and later talk. I do want to make one comment that probably most of us will applaud. Oh, no, excuse me. Next council meeting will be Chris Constantine's last city council meeting with the city of San Dimas. He'll be leaving to go up north to Los Catos, who is chomping at the bit to get him, to get us to release him to go up there, but we're going to keep him all the way till November 3rd. But he will be here. Anyone wishing to say goodbye to him next council meeting, we'll have maybe a small reception out in the lobby just to say goodbye to Chris. And, you know, he's done a great job since he's been here, and it's hurting me to say that, but.
Bye, Chris.
But at this point, if anybody, unless anyone has anything else to say, we're going to close this meeting and go on into a closed session that's very important. to close this meeting and go on into a closed session, that's very important.